Yeah, aloha, kakahiaka kakou. Welcome everyone to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. The meeting of the Board of Trustees that the record reflect that today is Thursday, August 7th, 2025. And the time now is nine oh six in the morning. Board Secretary, good morning, please take a roll call.
Trustee Ahuna.
Here.
Trustee Akaka.
Ayo.
Trustee Akina.
Aloha mai kakou.
Trustee Alapa. Trustee Galuteria.
Ayo.
Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Souza. Trustee Wahehe.
Present.
And Chair Kaheli. We have nine trustees present, you have quorum.
Okay, this meeting today can be viewed via livestream on OHA's website at www.oha.org/livestream. For those joining us on Zoom to testify or listen, please note that we are using the webinar platform rather than the standard Zoom meeting format. As an attendee, you'll be able to watch and listen to the proceedings. If you wish to testify on a specific agenda item, please follow these steps. Please raise your hand to indicate that you'd like to speak. We will change your status from attendee to panelist when it is your turn. It may take a few seconds, so we do appreciate your patience. As a panelist, you have the option to turn on your camera and unmute yourself to provide testimony. Once you have finished testifying, please mute yourself and you will be returned to attendee status. In addition to this, trustees, I'd like to remind everyone to please silence your cell phones. And this meeting is being conducted in compliance with HRS Chapter 92, OHA's bylaws, and Robert's Rules of Order for Small Boards as modified by applicable statutes and rules. A few reminders as we begin. Trustees must be recognized by the chair before speaking. Members may raise a hand instead of standing when seeking to obtain the floor and may remain seated while making motions or speaking. Motions need not be seconded. Public testimony will be called on each agenda item and limited to five minutes per speaker. Chair may fully participate in discussion and votes. And at this time, I'd like to recognize our couple, Hannah Stacey Farrow. Stacey, would you like to introduce any administrative staff that are with us today?
Mahalo Chair, aloha kakahiaka to the board. Joining us today in person, we have Investment Director and interim CFO Ryan Lee, Financial Analyst Grace Chen, General Counsel Everett Ota, Senior Director of Strategy and Implementation Elena Farden, Senior Director of Hawaiian Cultural Affairs Hailema Farden, Director of Human Resources Corey Nakamoto, France Manager Chantelle Bellet, Director of Communications Bill Brennan, IT Systems Engineer and Administrators Daniel Santos and Arlene Aguinaldo. Mahalo.
Okay, mahalo. And also for the trustees, we have a significant amount of our trustee staff here as well, as well as our Board Secretary, Deputy Chief of Staff, and Kapono Kokona, who is sitting in as our interim Board Counsel at this time. Next up, we have the approval of minutes. Lehu, do we have anyone signed up to testify on this item? This is for the May 1st, 2025 minutes.
So move.
No one has signed up to speak on these.
Okay, uh, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Okay, can we get a roll call vote, uh, excuse me?
Second.
Okay, no need second, but that's okay. Um, thank you, trustee Akina. Uh, any discussion trustees on the May 1st, 2025 minutes? Okay, hearing none, can we add a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Ahuna.
Yes.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa. Trustee Galuteria. Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Souza. Trustee Wahehe.
Yes.
And Chair Kaheli. You have nine yes votes. No one has signed up for this item.
Thank you, Chair Kaheli. Your Committee on Beneficiar advocacy and empowerment, having met on July 23, and after full and free discussion, recommends approval of the following motion. Approval of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs nominee for Kauai and Ihow Island Burial Council for Transmittal to the Office of Governor as follows, Megan Chun.
Trustee Ahuna.
Yes.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa. Trustee Galuteria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Souza. Trustee Wahehe.
Yes.
And Chair Kaheli. You have nine yes votes.
Okay, we are now moving on to the Committee on Budget and Finance. Uh, this would be for, on our agenda, it is number one, which was the budget realignment. Uh, Lehu, do we have anyone signed up to testify on this action item?
No one has signed up to speak on these items.
Okay, Chair recognizes now the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, Chair Alapa, to read the motion.
Mahalo Chair Kaheli. Your Committee on Budget and Finance, having met, um, for action item BF 25-52, for the OHA Biennium Budget for the Fiscal Biennium periods of 2023-2024, FY24, and 2024-2025, FY25, realignment number four. Approval of core and non-core budget alignments. Realignment, I'm sorry, realignments. That's it, yeah. Summarize that attachment number one. Thank you. It'll be bigger.
And B, okay. Trustee Alapa, that, uh, can you read also number B?
Oh, okay.
The, uh, carryover funds as well.
Got it. Uh, action, um, B. Approve the carryover of 1,103,000 in unspent, uncommitted, unencumbered funds for the BOT 23-07 Maui Island Wildfire for Maui Wildfire Recovery Efforts. These funds will be used for OHA's deployment of Kana'aho Grants for Lahaina and Kula, including direct distribution of disaster aid grants to beneficiaries.
Okay, do we have any discussion on that motion? Okay, hearing none, still a roll call vote on that motion.
Trustee Ahuna.
Yes.
Trustee Akaka. Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa.
Aye.
Trustee Galuteria. Trustee Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Souza. Trustee Wahehe.
Yes.
And Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
Nine yes votes, motion passes.
Okay, we're gonna go back to the previous action item, just to clarify the name of the nominee. And so, would we want to rescind that action and then repeat it?
I, I think we can just clarify that, um...
The last name?
That, yeah, trustee Alatara misspoke and said Megan Chun, said Megan Wong. If there be no objections, the record shall reflect that. So you'll have to ask for unanimous consent, that the record to reflect that his motion was based on Megan Wong, not Megan Chun. That's, so Chair's gonna ask for unanimous consent, um, to clarify the record, that your motion was referring to Megan Wong and not Megan Chun. And there be no objections.
Okay. Okay, so trustees, um, on the previous action item, this would be BAE 2505. Uh, the Chair would like to clarify that the nominee for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, Hawaii and Ihow Island Burial Council for Transmittal to the Office of the Governor is Megan Wong. And we have unanimous consent on that? There's no objections? Okay, that is approved. Megan Wong is the name that, uh, OHA will transmit to the Office of the Governor. Thank you. Okay, next we have, uh, OHA sponsorships. And, um, we are gonna take these items number two through 15. So if you're referencing your agenda, we're gonna take items number two through 15s. Um, if you're testifying, please identify the action item number that you're gonna testify on. So for the public, do we have anyone signed up to testify on these OHA sponsorships as agendized as item number two through 15?
No one has signed up for those items.
Okay. And regarding approval of action item number BF 2553, funding to Aina Momona for the 2025 Uluf Festival Event on September 20th, 2025, in the amount of $10,875. Uh, this sponsorship was approved by vote of all trustees at the July 23rd, 2025 Committee Meeting, and therefore the Chair is seeking unanimous consent for approval. Trustees, any discussion or objection on that? Okay, there being none, this item is approved. Moving on to action item number BF 2553. Excuse me, uh, fifty-three? Fifty-four, sorry about that, fifty-four. This is funding to Pohaku Pele Maka for the Hala Festival 2025 Event on September 20th, 2025, in the amount of $9,834. This sponsorship was approved by an affirmative vote of all trustees at the July 23rd, 2025 Committee Meeting, and therefore the Chair is seeking unanimous consent for approval. Any discussion or objection? There being none, this item is approved. Regarding approval of action item BF 2555, this is funding to Sky Brothers Collective DBA Oahu Intertribal Council for the 2025 Honolulu Intertribal Powao, Circle of Nations and Ho'oponopono Alii Event on September 20th to the 21st, 2025, in the amount of $14,500. This sponsorship was approved by an affirmative vote of all trustees at the July 23rd, 2025 Committee Meeting, and therefore the Chair is seeking unanimous consent for approval. Any discussion or objection? There being none, this item is approved. Regarding action item BF 2556, funding to the Oahu Hawaiian Canoe Racing Association Hawaii for the 2025 Na'ohine Okikai Event on September 28th, 2025, in the amount of $12,000. Is there a motion to approve? There's only a motion. Trustees, any discussion? If not, roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna.
Yes.
Trustee Akaka. Trustee Akina. Trustee Alapa.
Yes.
Trustee Galuteria. Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Souza. Trustee Wahehe.
Yes.
Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
You have eight yes votes and one aole.
Regarding approval of action item BF 2557, funding to the Hawaii Wildlife Center for the 2025 Hawaii Island Festival of Birds Event on October 4th, 2025, in the amount of $5,770. This sponsorship was approved by an affirmative vote of all trustees at the July 23rd, 2025 Committee Meeting. Therefore, the Chair is seeking unanimous consent for approval. Any discussion or objection? There being none, this item is approved. Regarding approval of action item BF 2558, funding Hawaii Islands Land Trust for the 2025 Malama Aina Kakoue Event on October 4th, 2025, in the amount of $10,000. This sponsorship was approved by an affirmative vote of all trustees at the July 23rd, 2025 Committee Meeting, and therefore the Chair is seeking unanimous consent for approval. Any discussion or objection? There being none, this item is approved. Regarding action item BF 2559, approval of funding to Lydia 8 for the Epic Wahine 2025 Event on October 5th through the 12th, 2025, in the amount of $15,000. Is there a motion to approve? Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna.
Aye.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa. Trustee Galuteria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Souza. Trustee Wahehe.
Yes.
Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
You have eight yes votes, one aole.
Regarding approval of action item BF 2560, funding to Mauna Maholi for the 2025 Pi Pi Pohaku Student Leadership Camp on October 8th to the 10th, 2025, in the amount of $14,980. This sponsorship was approved by an affirmative vote of all trustees at the July 23rd, 2025 Committee Meeting, and therefore the Chair is seeking unanimous consent for approval. Any discussion or objection? There being none, this item is approved. Regarding approval of action item BF 2562, funding to Kua Aloa Heia uh, use ecumenical youth, those are the key project, key project for the Wahehe Festival 2025 Event, which is on October 11th, 2025, in the amount of $7,500. This sponsorship was approved by an affirmative vote of all trustees at the July 23rd, 2025 Committee Meeting, and therefore the Chair is seeking unanimous consent for approval. Any discussion or objection? There being none, this item is approved. Regarding approval of action item BF 2563, funding to Ho'ou'ulu Ike Center for Hula and Mele for the 2025 A'aika Hula Competition on October 25th, 2025, in the amount of $10,875. This sponsorship was approved by an affirmative vote of all trustees at the July 23rd, 2025 Committee Meeting, and therefore the Chair is seeking unanimous consent for approval. Any discussion or objection? There being none, this item is approved. Regarding approval of action item BF 2564, funding to the YNI Economic Development Council for the 2025 Small Business Saturday YNI Business Resource Hub Event on November 8th, 2025, in the amount of $10,000. This sponsorship was approved by an affirmative vote of all trustees at the July 23rd, 2025 Committee Meeting, and therefore the Chair is seeking unanimous consent for approval. Any discussion or objection? There being none, this item is approved. Regarding approval of action item BF 2565, funding to the Makaha Hawaiian Civic Club for the 2025 Makaha Hawaiian Civic Club Annual Scholarship Luau Event on November 8th, 2025, in the amount of $8,000, this sponsorship was approved by an affirmative vote of all trustees to July 23rd, 2025 Committee Meeting, and therefore the Chair is seeking unanimous consent for approval. Any discussion or objection? There being none, this item is approved. Regarding approval of action item BF 2566, funding sponsorship to the Na'akamakai for the 2025 Kiki Surf Contest Event, being held November 8th, uh, November 28th through the 30th, 2025, in the amount of $11,250. This sponsorship was approved by an affirmative vote of all trustees at the July 23rd, 2025 Committee Meeting, and therefore the Chair is seeking unanimous consent for approval. Any discussion or objection? There being none, this item is approved. Regarding approval of action item BF 2567, funding to the Hamakua Youth Foundation, the Hamakua Youth Center or HYC, for the Ohana Day 2025 Event, it's gonna be on December 13th, 2025, in the amount of $5,875. This sponsorship was approved by an affirmative vote of all trustees at the July 23rd, 2025 Committee Meeting, and therefore the Chair is seeking unanimous consent for approval. Any discussion or objection? There being none, this item is approved. Okay. That's all our sponsorships. Okay, we're now on to the committee, the action item number C, okay? Action item number C is Board of Trustee, action item number 2509, this is to approve the formation of an ad hoc committee to reassess OHA's Mana'i Mauliola Mimo Strategic Plan to complete the required three-year check-ins and recommend necessary course corrections to ensure continued alignment of the Board's strategic priorities with its governance and fiduciary responsibilities. Lehu, do we have anyone sign up to testify on action item 2509?
No one has signed up to speak on this item.
Okay, can I get a motion? I guess I made the motion. Yep. Uh, let's get a motion, so moved, okay. All right, trustees, we have a motion on the table, and we can now do discussion. Who would like to open up for discussion on this action item? Trustee Akina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, let me say at the outset that, based upon the purpose of this motion as stated in the action item, I think we have strong ground for agreement. It's a very fine purpose. It states clearly that the goal is to ensure that through reassessing Mana'i Mauliola, two things happen. One, we complete the required three-year check-ins and recommend necessary course corrections. I think we can all be in agreement that that is a good thing. And number two, to ensure continued alignment of the Board's strategic priorities with its governance and fiduciary responsibilities. So I, I commend you in reinforcing the importance of those processes, and I'm in agreement with you that we must do so. The question I'd like to ask of the administration is whether or not these processes are in place and what the administration is doing and has done to ensure that these two goals are, are completed. May we direct this question to administration? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mahalo Chair, um, mahalo trustee Akina.
You have that question?
Yes, so in terms of the, the three-year check-in, I, I think it's helpful to make sure that we kind of ground everybody back in, in the timeline. So in 2023, uh, OHA was just coming out of the pandemic. So there wasn't a lot of traction or momentum or even action that was happening during, um, during the pandemic time. And so in 2023, there was an administrative shift, and there was a concern by the Board that there wasn't movement on Mana'i Mauliola. And so at that time, um, a new CEO was brought on. Um, and when I was hired, the request from the Board at that time was to effectuate the plan, get the plan moving because there hasn't been movement. And so with that, um, directive from the Board, that is what I did. And so establishing, basically was repurposing of the Office of Strategy Management that would, which was at that time, um, responsible for the strategic plan, but again, not a lot had occurred. Um, so having to, uh, refresh how the functionality of that, that pia worked so that we could get the action that was required for the strategic outcomes. As a result of that, uh, repurposing of that division and creating the new, uh, Strategy and Implementation Division, the things that were required in that third, three, uh, 2023, uh, check-in occurred as that team was put into place. So one, functionally, we needed to create a division that could do the work. Um, two, once we had that team in place, then they were able to, one, review the tactics, review the indicators, review the current processes, and really redefine what needed to be put into place so that we could get action on the strategic plan. All of those things have been done. Um, I've asked and I've, I've sent, um, to the trustees and kalamai, I, I was not privy to this action item. I, I saw the action item when it was shared publicly, so I was, I didn't have any chance to weigh in on the language or, um, you know, what is being proposed. So I apologize that my, my response to this, um, and I had Elena put together a timeline, which you folks, um, should have in front of you. Basically, all of the steps that we have taken that would satisfy that check-in, that three-year check-in. And so what she has done is she has outlined for you folks by date what the communications were to the Board in terms of the strategic plan check-ins. And and if you'd like, she can come up here and she can provide additional detail. I do believe that this request is duplicative and unnecessary because this is the work of strategy and implementation. We have a whole division whose work is to do this work. And to have an additional body, um, to do a parallel effort is unnecessary. Um, again, the work has already been underway, it's gonna continue, and again, this is their charge. Um, so they will continue to be doing reviews. And certainly, if at any time when Elena has come to the Board, um, to provide updates and even through the budget process when they did their presentation, there's, there's nothing precluding the Board of Trustees from asking for either additional information or to do, um, uh, further reporting or, or whatever is required. Um, we can certainly have the team follow up and, and do that. I, I will, I will share with you that when I did come on, um, in 2024, there was no report. And again, that report was because there was not a lot of work that had occurred. Granted, we had grants, grants was the lever truly for Mana'i Mauliola. That was the biggest way of effectuating the plan at the time. And thus, the large number of grants that we have today in, in terms of, I think we have about eighty? About eighty or so? And that was the way that, um, Mana'i Mauliola at the time had been implemented. So I can bring Elena up to further, um, detail the, the various opportunities in which she has ga, engaged with the BAE Committee as well as the full Board, um, to address any concerns that, um, this check-in has not been addressed.
So in response to my question, you are saying that the function of the three-year check-ins is taking place and there is structure for it, and also the continued alignment of the Board's strategic priorities is something that you're seeing is done?
Yeah, absolutely, and, and again, the, the alignment to the Board, um, has been in those various presentations that Elena has provided to both BAE and to the full Board, is to ensure that you know that the structures are in place so that we can effectuate the plan without stru- we were not pulling anything off the shelf when we arrived, right? This had to be created. In order for you folks to be able to see action, whatever previous documents existed had to be reviewed and had to be refreshed. And then we had to put in a structure to actually get tactics created and implemented. That was demonstrated in the budget that was provided to the Board from SNI. There were various tactics that the team had put together over a course of a fiscal year and presented in the Biennium Budget. Again, that is the work of SNI, is to ensure that there's constant and consistent alignment with what the strategic outcomes are, which you're asking the agency to do, as well as making sure that we have tactics that we can implement and we have the resources applied to that. That's exactly what happened.
Thank you.
Trustee Alapa? Yeah, trustee Alapa.
Can you, um... Sorry, I'd like to hear from Elena.
Yeah, that, uh, request is approved.
Okay.
Aloha Elena. You're recognized.
Elena Farden, SNI, Senior Director and interim COO. I'm happy to answer any questions. I do wanna preface at this time that I'm here in my role in my kulana, under administration, in the role that I serve for OHA's Mana'i Mauliola. I'm not here to serve, uh, to pick or choose either plan, either ad hoc or the 2022 check-in. My goal here in providing any questions or answers is really to be factual, so it's data informed for the trustees, but also community-centered, so.
Okay. So according to the, um, did you prepare this report for us?
Yes, I was asked by CEO to prepare this timeline for the, for today.
Okay, so with the timeline that, um, did we have a short, um, presentation on that? Is that on the, one of the pages here?
It would just be the first two pages of the memo. Would it be the matrix that you see under the heading Timeline of Administrations, Memo, Communications, and Board Engagement? And a matrix looks like a brief table. Nothing fancy, I'm sorry this time.
Okay, no, no problem. So could you kindly explain to us, um, are we meeting any of these objections, um, objectives, um, in our strategic... are we meeting any of these objections, objectives in our strategic plan?
Can you be more specific about these?
Okay, so the beginning from the communications, everything that's listed there. I didn't get a chance to go through it because you just got that. But could you kind of give us an overall brief overview of that, please?
Sure, I can give you a brief overview of the table to read it. So starting with the first row, what you have here is the date that this happened, what was presented at that time, to who we presented it to, whether it was the BAE or the Board of Trustees, and then what that purpose was at that time, meaning what inflection point did the trustees have at that time to ask questions, to make reviews or assess?
I'm looking, yes, I'm looking at what's on the screen. Oh, that's your memo, which is. I think it was her memo. Elena's, and to briefly explain that overview. Yeah. Sorry, sorry. Be clear, yeah.
Is it okay to proceed? Sure. So I'll take you through the first row. The date we have is November 2023 to November 2024. This highlights prior to my coming on board, but what it highlights is the establishment of SNI under CEO's purview. And with that, the governance that happens with the trustees on how that division was settled. The second row. It might be helpful that I also take you through the document. I apologize that it's so large, but I believe in context, so I didn't want to just take out documents. Yes. Second row, you'll have external beneficiary engagement. This you will find, again, that SNI conducted eighteen strategic engagement sessions. The facts are there and also the report would be in CEO's performance evaluations. The third row, October to November 2024, as well as November 2024. This is in preparation for the legislative bill. And this here is strategy and implementation, putting together our legislative bill that asks for a specific budget for general funds, as well as the programs in which those funds would support. This is noted also within the supplements. October and November 2024 and November 2024 are basically the same evidence. March 6, 2025, again, this is CEO update status on Mani Maoliola. And moving to March 18, 2025, this is our Mani Maoliola flow chart in which we presented to the BAE leadership team consisting of Committee Chair Galutaria and Vice Chair Akaka. April 15, 2025, these are our memo tactics, also presented to the BAE leadership team. And April 29, 2025, our BAE leadership briefing on the dashboard, which is the design and development of what that dashboard plan would look like for transparency reporting. April 30, 2025, would also be the strategic plan that was presented to the BAE Committee. And then finally, we conclude with May 22, 2025, for SNI budget briefing for FY '26 and '27. So these points within the timeline provide an ability and opportunity for both leadership and trustees to ask questions, make review, make assessments, and pivots within the progress and outcomes for the strategic plan.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Hey, mahalo. Mahalo, Mr. Chair. Aloha, Kapuana, Elena. First of all, mahalo for the report. I asked for this report about fourteen months ago, twelve to fourteen months ago. At that time, I believe Carla Ostedera was working on it. The last time we engaged on it was in person, was on the administrative side in passing, and the report was almost complete. And now that was in reference to the first three years. I think we're going into year number five now, I believe. And so this morning, I received a report, right? Trustee Alapa, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think your question was, have we met the strategic outcomes? Because we have a lot, we have a lot. Twenty-six. Have we met? Not what we did, what the department has done, how many times we met, what the timeline is. And the reason why I ask is because we finally got an opportunity to meet, right? You, myself, and Chirko Hale, as well as one of my aides, Rishal Kim, and Kuikia, O'Hello, as well. And the question was, do we agree that there is changes that need to be made to this ad hoc? And I think we kind of all agreed on that, to the, sorry, to the memo. And I also asked for a report. And I did bring it to your attention that I had asked for a report before. And you responded with, because you guys had just started, you guys have been here for a year, there's really no report. But the report I was referring to was the one that I had asked for prior to that, when STC first started. All right? And it was being worked on. So this morning, I receive a report, but it's not a report to me because the report would show, are we reaching those benchmarks, right, of twenty-six? Can I have one category, housing, education, whatever it may be? Are we reaching that? Because that's going to help the ad hoc committee or whatever it is moving forward. And I also want to note that when we did discuss a potential ad hoc and what the structure would look like, right, without mentioning members or anything like that, because that's for the board to decide. Elena, Director of SNI, was in full agreement, I guess, at that time, and thought it was a great idea. So I just want, I want to make note of that for this board, that we did have a great conversation on it. And we thought that that would be the best step to take. And so, which was, for me, for example, housing, that is one thing that I've been wanting to change, right? I'm housing, I mean, for example, right? Outcome, strengthen capability for O'Hana to meet living needs, including housing, strengthen effective implementation of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. So, simple. Have we met that? What have we done? How many people have we got into housing? How many have we educated? How many do we provide down payment assistance for? That's, I think, the numbers, and trustee, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but that would be my question if it wasn't yours. Where's that? Because we should have some kind of report, whether it's from you. When Sylvia, now, you didn't implement, you didn't create this, you weren't here STC when this memo was created, Sylvia was. What was the intentions? Who was supposed to deliver on this, right? Because an SNI department was created, right, so-called to implement a memo, right, for the Board of Trustees. That was one of the directives. Prior to that, where's all the information? What are we basing anything on? What are we basing SNI on? This last three months, last six months, last twelve months. I don't see that. And again, I just received it this morning, so I would have to go through it. But I don't think that's what's in here. And if it was in here, or if it isn't here, then that would help the ad hoc committee. And so I think we need that. I mean, that's a start, I think. I don't know if you want to respond to that, if I can get a response, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Elena.
Mahalo, Vice Chair. I do want to acknowledge that I was also in agreement in part of the initial draft for the ad hoc committee. There's validity in that, as well as validity in the memo that you have here. Again, my role is not to pick or choose which process would be better. Heavy is the head that wears a crown. You are all elected officials to make those heavy decisions and deliberate here. To answer your question, Vice Chair, have we met those twenty-six outcomes? I can clearly say here on behalf of the team that we have not. The reason being, in 2024, with the formation of SNI, there was no substantial budget in which to roll out programs that align to those outcomes in which to effectuate it. The only budget that we've been pushed through is for our FY '26 and '27, which we have gone through the budget briefing. It has been adjusted and we are working through with those constraints. And those will be rolled out within this year to effectuate the progress on those outcomes. I can say, though, beyond SNI, with the other PIA that we work with, the grants and event sponsorships, there may be some progress that we've made on that. We can get those reports and data for you, but they won't be as progressive as we had hoped within year five. Again, if you have a sale plan for Moana Nui'a Kea, but they have no budget for the crew or staff to get from here to Tahiti around the world, or support from Hawaiian Airlines to get their crews, or support from community in order to have food provisions, there's no way that you're going to make progress on twenty-six outcomes without investing in them first.
Thank you, Elena. Chair, for me follow-up. I think those are pretty substantial budget. Let's just say there's a pretty substantial personnel budget, right, to create this division for SNI, right, to implement the memo, right? At the end of the day, we can talk about grants. Let's talk about grants, housing grants, right? I'm not going to mention names, but we give money out to different programs, large sums, $1.5 million and up, for mortgage education, down payment assistance, supposedly. Where are those numbers? That's what I want to know because there was a large budget. There's grants going out, and I think grants affects pretty much every part of our strategic plan. I mean, we don't support it if it doesn't. That is one of the requirements. So therefore, where are those numbers? Where's the reports from these guys that we've been giving grants to, right? If that affects housing, where's that report? And so I think that's super easy because it doesn't require SNI Department doing any of the work. All it requires is us reaching out to one of our vendors or one of our grantees for that matter, and just getting that report and reporting back to the board. So I think, talking about budget, I would disagree because there's a pretty large budget to attempt to even get one strategic outcome, you know? And so, Mr. Chair, I'm done at this time. Leave opportunity for other trustees, mahalo.
Thanks, trustee Suzo. Before recognizing trustee Huna, just for context for the trustees, you know, like the vice chair said, and we've been talking about the implementation of our strategic plan because it's such a foundational bedrock of this organization and the need to reassess and to update, if necessary, that strategic plan. The strategic plan was updated in September of 2019. That's almost six years ago. Five years and ten months. The strategic plan, when it was developed, and many of you were here when it was developed, back in 2018, 2019, called for triennial check-ins that should have been done in 2023, and it needs to be done in 2026, which is just a few months away. And if you look at the timeline, the committee's work and the final report that needs to be presented to the Board of Trustees, which will need to be adopted by this board anyway, would need to be due no later than the end of the year. So what this ad hoc committee will do is accomplish a comprehensive triennial check-in that should have been done in 2023. It'll also accomplish the 2026. And it'll be able to frame the Mahla Maoliola strategic plan based on the budget that we just passed. So when the vice chair and I and our staff met with Elena and Kuikia, we discussed that. And we discussed some of the things that we thought were lacking in the strategic plan, like the twenty-six objectives that exist, like the mention of AR in just one little blurb. There's nothing that talks about AR or any measurable outcomes in that. We worked together on drafting and preparing the strategic plan. The senior director of SNI helped to co-prepare it. She had excellent suggestions. I want to mahalo those trustees who volunteered to serve on this ad hoc committee. Yeah, it was a tough choice, but ultimately I selected or proposed to select, right? You guys still have to agree. Trustee Huna to be the vice, the chair, and trustee Alapa to serve on the ad hoc committee. But there are three administrative positions that are voting members on this ad hoc committee. The vice chair, which is the senior director of SNI, the director of advocacy, Lainala, as well as our research systems manager, Kalihannis. There's also a pretty robust group of non-voting ex-official members, which includes right at the top, the CEO, and many other really smart, what I think impactful, members of the O'Hana that will serve in this capacity, as well as reaching out to non-advisory members in the community. There's a pretty short timeline, you know, there's things that need to be done by August 30th. And I know Elena had expressed the desire to have this done as soon as possible so you can have like clear marching orders and how to execute the resources that you have in the budget. I thought the end of October might be a little ambitious, and so we extended that out to the end of the year. But by all means, if we have a robust effort in bringing some of the sharpest minds together and looking at this strategic plan at its practically six-year point now, right, there's many new trustees that are on this board that were not there in 2018 and 2019 when this was created. I think this is a good thing. And I think this will allow us, if needed, to course correct where our resources are going, to achieve some of the pillars that exist. And in some cases, reduce the twenty-six objectives that we have, which I think is a good thing as well. So that's the context around it. This was co-prepared by myself and the senior director of SNI. And, you know, I'm going to ask for your eventually support for it. I think it's a good thing. And so this time, I'll recognize trustee Huna.
Yeah, yes, Chair. Well, first of all, thank you. For me, I was getting confused because the action item is about the ad hoc committee, right? And I just, for me, it's strategic planning is our fiduciary obligation. This, that's what we have to do. That's chapter 10. That is our job. But we're lucky because we have people like Elena Fardin to be a part of these committees. So for me, I'm here to support that, and that's part of the process, and that's our fiduciary obligation. And the reason why I know this is because when we had a former CEO, he published a book and people started grumbling like, why did you do that? You know, and then one of the answers was, that's your fiduciary obligation as the Board of Trustees. So I just wanted to make sure and remind everybody on the table, it's about what we do. The process that we have to stand up for is under chapter 10, and we just got to follow that. And I just don't want to get mixed up between, you know, like, oh, we don't want this person on the table. We have hot hammers on our team right now. So I'm very supportive of this ad hoc committee, and I think we can do a good job, but we have to go back and revisit and look at it. And that is our fiduciary obligation. So thank you.
Trustees, you know, I, yeah, I do have to address, you know, I didn't have an opportunity to read, I don't know how much, 180 pages that was brought to our office like thirty minutes before the board was going to convene, but I was able to read an email that was sent to all of the trustees by the administrator. And there's certain words you used that concerned me, unnecessary, duplicative, undermining the integrity and the intent of the division that's supposed to effectuate this important work. I mean, I take concern with those words and the position that you're taking opposing this ad hoc committee. I'm trying to understand why you feel that way and why the resistance is the same resistance we felt back in February when we proposed the ad hoc salary commission recommended. Ad hoc committee. I feel the same resistance from the administration, in particular, the administrator. Can you please explain the email that you sent and why you use those words?
Sure. So Chair, there has been a pattern of overreach from the board chair's office. And whether it was with this particular action, the salary ad hoc, the budget, there continues to be action on your part that really does not allow for the PIA that are charged with doing this work to just do the work. And that's not to say that we cannot be collaborative because there have been many opportunities in which, in this particular case regarding the strategic plan, where Elena has been in front of the board or in front of the committee and um, where Elena has been in front of the board or in front of the committee, and there has not been any kind of request, um, because all of these things can be done and brought in front of the board for your folks' discussion, for your recommendation, just like how we did with the budget, right? And so when the staff is not allowed to just be able to do the work at hand, it is undermining to them. They do feel devalued when they cannot just address the work. And when it, when it, it keeps, um, being pulled from, from their, from their kuliana, it, it is disheartening for folks, and it is seen as, as undermining. And, and I will share with you
One question.
Part, call of mine really quickly, and, and, and an example of this particular ad hoc, um, A I, I was not a part of it. I was not asked to review it, it was done, it was given straight to, um, to the S and I senior director without any input or consultation or collaboration with me, Chair. And that I see as undermining as well. And, you know, there was a, a request to have me as part of a voting member of this ad hoc, and that was not honored, that was not, um, and I'm not sure why, so I now have subordinates that, um, that are voting members, and the CEO has been relegated, um, to, I guess, participating in an informational kind of way. Um, but that diminishing of my role, the diminishing of the work of the individual Paya, uh, whether it's finance, doing the budget, whether it's H R, doing, you know, the salaries, and now in this case, you know, S and I being able to provide recommendations to the board for the board's consideration. I, I do see as problematic, and I, I see it as a consistent pattern.
Whose role is it to develop and continually assess the strategic plan?
So the initial development of the, I mean,
It's, it's just a, it's just a question.
At the end of, so at the end of the day, the development is administration, and it is brought before the board for approval.
Okay. You know what ten six says? Number one. Chapter ten Hawaii revised statutes, ten six, number one. What does it say?
I, 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 I don't accept your challenge right now of, of having to say it verbatim.
Yeah, I'll tell, I'll, I'll, I'll tell what it says. Ten six, chapter one, was adopted by the state legislature in nineteen seventy-nine. It was based on the Constitutional Convention of nineteen seventy-eight, and the framers that envisioned this agency. And the legislative body in nineteen seventy-nine wrote chapter ten. And ten six is the general duties of the board. And there's, there's probably, there's probably about fifteen of them. This is the first one, very first. Ten six, general duties of the board, the general duties of the board shall be to develop and continually update a strategic plan for the office that shall include but not be limited to the following. The sole power and authority to develop and continually update a strategic plan rests with the nine elected members of this board. Trustee Suzo?
Um, Mahalo, Mr. Chair, um. I wanna address up these days that, um, you had said earlier about overreach, um, of the chair's office. And I hope this is not in reference to, um, things that are pending, but solely the issue at hand, uh, which is the action item here today. The action item here today is to form an ad hoc committee, whether to form or not. That is the decision of the board. Right? So there's no overreach. The chair's office put together this action item, as do I when I run my meetings, as does Luana, as does Brickwood. We all put together our own agenda items, right? Whether it's stuff from administration that you would like to include, that needs to be vetted before it gets on the agenda. So at this time, I don't see any overreach, I just wanna make that clear, from the chair's office on the issue at hand. Because I was a part of a conversation earlier as well, so it did not only involve Chair Kahele, is what I wanna say. So I don't see any overreach until the board decides on something. Right? Once the board decides, and that didn't even happen yet, so I don't see any overreach, is, is what I wanna say, for the record. Next, please.
I would, I, I'd like to address the second part of your comments, which was why you were left off the voting members of the committee. And, and Elena, in her, um, comments, did ask to include you as a member of the voting committee, and it was my decision to not include you as a member of the voting committee and keep the voting committee as it was proposed. And the reason for that is, and I have several notes here, but there's, there's, I believe, really sound governance, ethical and strategic reasons that the CEO should be on the ad hoc committee in a non-voting basis during the reassessment of this plan. And if the plan is, and the work of the committee is truly to be independent, to be inclusive and aligned with our fiduciary best practices, these are some of the reasons. First and foremost is to preserve checks and balances. This board is the only board that sets policy and strategic direction. Your job is to implement that, and the rest of your team, period. Having the CEO vote on strategic revisions to that plan conflates governance and administration. Sort of vo, and just the principle of avoiding a conflict of interest by the CEO either defending or justifying current implementation of the plan, or if revisions are needed, it's better to preserve checks and balances by, by having the CEO in an ex-voting capacity. The next is to encourage candid convers, uh, evaluation and conversation. So we can promote honest dialogue among the committee members, especially staff, committee voices. Um, it reduces pressure by having the CEO in a non-voting status, where the CEO can contribute ideas um, without the perception of any undue influence. We want this ad hoc committee to remain object, objective. We don't want any voting bias on the committee. And as a person responsible for oper, operation, excuse me, operationalizing and executing this plan, um, I didn't want the CEO to unintentionally influence the outcome of the plan to affect its decision, decisions or structures. And so a non-voting role signals that the strategic evaluation is led by the two members of our board, community stakeholders with the CEO in a role, and it is the exact reason why I'm not on the committee, because I didn't wanna put my thumb on the ad hoc committee's work. Fourth, clarifying the role of the CEO, right? The CEO should serve as an advisor, not an arbiter. The CEO should serve as a knowledgeable advisor to the committee, offering insights, data, admin perspective, but not as a decision maker in shaping that strategic vision. At the end of the day, like trustee Huna said, this report will come back to us, we'll get a chance to provide input on it, including the administration. Um, and then finally, it's just a best practice in strategic planning, right? In, in different types of non-governmental and governmental settings, typically CEO is in an ex-official, non-voting capacity, especially as a race of strategic planning committees to maintain governance. And it just builds trust within this organization, and I trust the, the five voting members that are on this board, including the vice chair and the two other people that are in this room. And so that is the reason why. I, in my capacity, decided to not include you on that, ultimately, it's up to the trustees at this table. Um, but I think it's good governance to allow yourself and others, including the board of trustee chief of staff and many others that are part of this, um, proposed ad hoc committee, to give their input and their guidance and, uh, and keep it at that. I'd also, uh, uh, highlight that three members of the admin technically form the majority of the ad hoc committee. So I think it's pretty well thought out and reasonable. Um, I do have a, if no one has any, oh, okay, um, score trustee, uh, Akina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate your concern for legality with respect to H R S as well as integrity. And I thank you for factoring that into this process. However, I think that we have to recognize that while the board most definitely carries full fiduciary responsibility and authority for everything done by Oha and in the name of Oha, we also, by practice and by statute, delegate those responsibilities. But someone passed out to me ten six, one through nine, which is a list of the roles that the board has or the duties the board has, including the ones you've mentioned. And if I were to read all of them, the board would be doing everything, including talking to outsiders who come to approach the organization. But there's an important passage as well, which I believe we practice and use. You'll give me a moment to look that up. H R S ten, five and six, ni, ten, five, six. The board shall have the power in accordance with law to delegate to the administrator. That's our CEO Kapuana. Its officers and employees, such powers and duties as may be proper for the performance of the powers and duties vested on the board. So while I do not disagree with you that it is the board's ultimate responsibility and authority to execute the review of the strategic plan and its update, the board also, by statute and by practice, has the capacity to delegate that to the administrator and the staff. In fact, we have delegated it. Oh, and when KP was hired back in two thousand two, twenty-two or twenty-three, around there, we were without an administrator, we were replacing an administrator, and part of the hiring that factored into the contract included her job description, which includes the role we're talking about today, the revision and updating of the strategic plan. Um, her description earlier is that she said about creating an, a division, S and I, in order to execute that. So from that starting point, it was her intention to fulfill the three-year plan of review and updating with the board. As she explained, she's in the process of that. So, yes, I do agree with you that it is the board that carries the authority, but we have delegated that authority to the CEO. Now, I was surprised to hear her say at the table today that she just learned of this action item. And that's very strange to me, because frankly, I was kind of blaming her for not knowing about this earlier. But if it is the case that just this week, or she became, is that the case? She became aware of this action item and the process of this ad hoc committee. Anyone observing our organization would recognize that that would be out of keeping with the delegation we've given her to be responsible for this process. And as I've read the action item, I see that she's actually being removed from authorities that she's been given. She is a non-voting member where her subordinate employees have a vote over her. That's a clear violation of the best practice that the board practices policy setting and governance while the administration carries on management. And you and I, we've had philosophical talks about this before. But I think it would probably be in Oha's best interest at this time for us to table this motion and review it further. Um, because we wanna make sure that what the CEO has presented to us, that a process and, and, uh, an infrastructure are in place and have the capacity to yield the results that we want, and that we're not gonna damage that. I know that best intentions were met when the board intervened in the budgeting cycle, but things that we as board members could not be aware of directly were interfered with, such as the timing of budgeting and strategic planning and so forth. In addition, it resulted in quite a bit of chaos, I think, at the administrative level. Mr. Chair, I'm absolutely with you in the results that you're promoting today. We've gotta review the strategic plan, we can't wait fifteen years and find that we've been off course. Uh, I'm absolutely with you in that. I had the privilege yesterday, I took up the offer by S and I, S and I, uh, to, um, be briefed, as they've offered to trustees, on their entire system and process. And Elena Farden came with team members and showed me that we have a very robust team of professionals in place capable of reviewing the, the strategic plan, delivering the metrics to us and the reports that we need. And I'd like to see them have a shot at being able to do that. Ultimately, the CEO is responsible for that, and frankly, uh, forgive me for being so frank to the parties I mentioned now. We board members and the CEO are looking at an evaluation and future contracts eventually for the CEO. So we have the mechanism by which to actually affect the changes if we ultimately want to. So I would just recommend to fellow trustees, let's ke, keep this process in place, let's give it a shot. Let's, uh, keep our eye on it like a hawk and demand what we need to demand of the administration and the CEO. But let's not take away the responsibility and the authority we actually vested in our chief executive officer in order to carry out what we need to have carried out. Let's work through her, let's learn to do that together as best we can, and let's, uh, let's move forward together. Holomua, and in the spirit of giving, getting produced the best strategic plan we can for the Lahui. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, trustee Akina, I, you know, I wish I could agree with everything you said, unfortunately, I don't. Um, everything that this board has done, I believe, in the last six to nine months, has dramatically improved this organization. And I am one hundred percent confident that this ad hoc committee is gonna produce a product for this board that will make the Mauna e Mauleola strategic plan that much more effective. That power does rest with this board, develop and continually assess. Delegation of authority can be rescinded at any time. We re, retain that authority and power to develop this document, it, the statute is, is clear. Trustee Suzo?
Um, Mahalo, Mr. Chair, um, I'm sure you're all aware, because we all got the memo, um, interim chain of command memo. Currently, uh, I'm Stacy's direct supervisor, right, Stacy? Chair?
Yes.
I'm her direct supervisor.
Mr. Chair?
So.
Hold on, trustee Suzo's recognized.
Just point of order, if I may, politely.
Sure.
I'm wondering if we should have counsel, confer with counsel before continuing that conversation.
No, yeah, I'm not going any deeper into that, just stating my position on that.
Trustee Suzo, continue.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so I wanna talk about communication, so after we met with Elena, I talked to Stacy, I said, it was a great meeting, and this is what we're thinking about doing, this is the conversation that came up. So you were aware of an ad hoc potentially coming up, date where it was gonna be presented to the board was kinda unclear, right? Um, I think when the, the agenda was posted, that's when we all had found out about it. But I just wanna make note that we, we talked about it briefly, that that's what came out of, of the conversation. So my question would be, Elena, since then, have you ever brought it up to Stacy, if this is what we talked about, because I was open about it, and I just said, hey, this is what was discussed, keeping my, you know, our Kapuana in the loop, right? Uh, uh, talking about communication and, and, uh, so was there anything back and forth between you and, uh, Stacy about that?
Elena, you're recognized.
Sorry, no?
That's better. So based on the agenda item that's before us, my, my role and my kulana was just to provide the facts of what I was purviewed to and what I participated in in both the ad hoc committee and also putting together this timeline. It was not my intent to come here and choose between what's a good purpose, or if I communicated, it feels inquisitive uh, to be put on the spot, whether or not I communicated with my direct supervisor. I'm not sure, um, what the, how this question aligns with the agenda item.
Well, I'm just saying, because, um, you're saying today was the first day you found out about the action item, not today, but when it came out right on the agenda when it was posted, but I'm just saying, I had a conversation with her prior to that. And I, I was just wanting to know if you also, so you, you were kinda aware that it was coming up potentially, uh, whether you agreed with it or not, agreed with the action item or not, potential action item. I did bring it to your attention that this is what we're discussing, right? Because, Mr. Chair, I guess if Kapuana can respond.
Thank you, Vice Chair. So, um, I knew that, um, because I had asked Elena, because you had requested a meeting, um, with S and I to better understand. So I had requested that of Elena, um, So I had requested that of Elena to make appointments with each of the trustees. And I think she started with Chair. And that meeting then turned into, I guess, a joint meeting between the two of you in which this new concept of an ad hoc was proposed. So yes, you did share that with me. This action item, I, with whatever drafts were, well, the initial draft and any drafts after that that were proposed, I was not privy to. And certainly, again, with chain of command, any request of Elena should have come to me.
There was a request. That's why we had the meeting. Right? I requested a year ago, Stacy.
Any requests to, for any kind of work product or engagement would have come through me.
This is a conversation, okay, so, Mr. Chair, if I may, follow up. So, and we don't have to go in depth about this, but I have a passion for certain parts of our strategic plan. Housing, obvious. I brought it up to our previous CEO, right? John was in that conversation, trustee Wahai was in that conversation. When you started, we had another conversation. And I was waiting for an opportunity to speak to SNI. Right? A year later, we have an opportunity. And I kept reminding you because that's the process. I didn't want to go to Elena. If I start in the Hall E, we got to meet, or my staff reach out, it's, I kept reminding you. Right? So finally, we get a meeting, right? In that meeting, a year later, and we're brain dumping. We're just, we just have so many things that we want to accomplish here. We're all passionate about the money in Mauleola, all of a sudden, five years in, right? Where are we going? And we couldn't answer questions. So therefore, this was one of the solutions that was proposed. No decisions were made. The decision is going to be made by the board today. Right? No decisions were made. That conversation went to the proper channels. We met, we sat down. Talk about being strategic, this is what we came up with. And therefore, today, a decision is going to be made. So I'm kind of unclear about how this is not supported or how we didn't go to the proper channels or have this overreach on the chair's office. I'm kind of confused about that process because that hasn't been done yet. If I'm not allowed to have a conversation with Elena talking about an ad hoc committee, then to me, that's a problem.
I'd like to, thank you, Elena. If Keith is here, I saw Keith there earlier. I have a question for Keith. Oh, he was here. Keith? Not here. Is, is Carla online? No? Okay. Well, if they come, I have a question for them. Because they were here when the strategic plan was originally adopted. Anyway. Any more trustees? Have any discussion?
We're going to vote?
Yeah, you ready? Okay, all right. Chair's hearing, no discussion. We're going to move to adopt action item twenty-five oh nine. This is the approval of the formation of an ad hoc committee to reassess OAS Mauna Imauleola memo strategic plan to complete the required three-year check-ins, which includes twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-six, and recommend any necessary course corrections to ensure continued alignment of the board's strategic priorities with its governance and fiduciary responsibilities. Just for trustees' awareness, this is, if, if it is voted in affirmative, it is adopted. And the committee will do its work or its timetable, and it will bring back their recommendations to this board no later than the end of the year. And this board will then be able to deliberate, amend, adopt, or not accept the recommendations of the ad hoc committee. Roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna?
Yes.
Trustee Akaka, aole. Trustee Akina?
Aole.
Trustee Alapa?
I'd like to know regarding what trustee Kina had mentioned, on tabling this because we have all this information before us, are we allowed to be able to do such a thing?
No, we're in a vote right now.
Okay, fine. As much as I appreciate all the work that our administration has done and so forth, I personally look at the this opportunity for us to really dive in. I've always been interested in wanting to know how the strategic plan has been unfolding and the outcomes that we are trying to obtain and reach. And I, I too would like to know a little bit more and be involved as a fiduciary part of responsibility. Though I do know, Stacy, you folks have done an outstanding job in the continuation of that. And I believe we could just work together in a more personal way in which we do this. It will help me to understand the full complexity of our program and that I'd be happy to, to do the recommendations. And I really would like to learn more about this, so I'm going to go with yes.
Malo, trustee, trustee Galutaria? Trustee Nanzi?
No.
Trustee Suzu?
Aye.
Trustee Wahai? Chair Kahile?
Aye.
You have six yes votes and three aole.
Action item is adopted. Thank you for all your work that is ahead of you. Trustee Chair Ahuna, trustee Alapa, and the rest of the team, let's get to work. We're moving on to the status of OHA activities. This is the administrative update. And the chair would like unanimous consent to take these items out of order, given that we didn't have an opportunity to address several of these items at the last meeting because it ran over. So I'm going to move and like to ask unanimous consent to move items A and B and the status of OHA activities to the end of the updated agenda. And we're going to start with item C, which is a human resources update. Do we have unanimous consent for that? Trustees' discussion? Okay, hearing none. Kapuana, you are recognized for the administration's update on OHA activities, starting with item number C, human resources update. This is to update the board on the current OHA staff vacancies and specifically as it relates to the recruitment of a CFO, Chief Fiscal Financial Officer, as well as the Managing Director of Real Estate, our Washington DC Bureau Chief, our Associate General Counsel, two legal counsel positions, our Budget Chief and the Community and Brand Engagement Manager, the Research Systems Manager, the Controller, and the Investments Land Manager. And you're recognized.
Mahalo, Chair. I'm just going to go down the, the list as it's here on the agenda. So for the Chief Fiscal Officer, we are still in recruitment. We are engaging with different headhunting agencies because we have found it difficult to find qualified applicants. So that pursuit continues. Our Managing Director of Real Estate, we are going to be conducting interviews next week. Our Washington DC Bureau Chief position is on the agenda with the BAE leadership so that we can discuss how best to move forward with the Bureau Chief position. For the Associate General Counsel, Legal Counsel, that is underway and in recruitment from our General Counsel, who is leading that effort. The Budget Chief has yet to have a PD created by the interim CFO. The Community and Brand Engagement Manager is waiting upon a PD. The Research Systems Manager, I have to ask Corey about that one as he's coming up. The other one is Controller and Controller is being recruited now. And the Investment Land Manager is, can you speak on that one too? Investment Land Manager and the Research Systems Manager.
I guess just I'll, I'll lead. I think probably, I mean, there's so many really important positions on here, but clearly the CFO is a, is a vital, critical position. What is the exact update on that? Corey, Stacy?
So the, well, actually, it should be probably Brian.
Brian.
Why don't we have Brian come up? So as I mentioned, we, we had a viable candidate and the candidate pulled out for a second interview, or actually a formal interview because we had done an informal interview in which he had expressed interest. And he actually had put in an application. And unfortunately, that fell through, so we had to go back. And there were no other viable candidates in the pool. So can you talk about the headhunter activity?
A lot, trustees. So we're looking at engaging search firms to, to work with us in identifying qualified candidates through more of a contingency basis search. So that, that's the, the current steps that we're taking right now.
So right now, we have no one
That's correct.
in the hopper for the CFO position.
That's correct.
Okay. I know Managing Director of Real Estate, that went out?
As, as I just reported, we are having interviews next week.
Okay, I'm just going to run down the list. Do we have a position description for the Washington DC Bureau Chief? We do?
So that was an existing position. Yes, we do.
Okay. And in consultation with Chair Galutera, that should be going out for
Well, I, I, I think we're going to have a discussion at an upcoming meeting to really solidify what is the direction that we're hoping to accomplish through advocacy and how this role will be able to effectuate that.
Okay. Everett? Associate General Counsel, Legal Counsel, position descriptions drafted?
Good morning, trustees. There is a description for the Associate General Counsel position, but it's currently under revision by me. I'm updating it to conform to the responsibilities of that position. Also relative to kind of updates that we were, that we did to the General Counsel position and the Legal Counsel position. So just conforming revisions to that. As to the Legal Counsel recruitment, the Legal Counsel position recruitments, the recruitment period ended last week, Thursday, and there are candidates that have been provided to me for review. So we'll be beginning interviews for those positions shortly within the week.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure I speak for all the trustees that we know you're a one-man shop. And getting you some reinforcements is really, really important for all the work that you do. So it, it looks like we have some Legal Counsel candidates that are interested in coming here to OHA.
That's correct. So I'll be looking more closely at those resumes that were provided to me of qualified candidates by HR. And we'll be, again, looking to do interviews as, beginning of next week.
Okay.
Or beginning of next week.
Great. Good luck. The Community and Brand Engagement Manager, Stacy, is there a position description, at least in, in draft for that?
You know, I know there was a, a conversation at the, the last board meeting regarding that particular position. And I'm going to have to follow up with Lisa. She's on, she's out of the office today. But I, I think there was an, there was a conversation, if, if I'm remembering correctly, that she wanted to utilize that position to be more of a BSA slash brand engagement. Do you remember that conversation? So I, so I think that there's, there's still, that's in limbo, but I will follow up with her and I'll give you a report.
Okay, I, I think that's a really important position and it's one that this board included in the budget because of the lack of robust community and brand engagement and all of these sponsorship opportunities we're doing. And I just had to read twenty minutes of them. We're not there. You know, we, we ask for a robust list of things that these event organizers will provide to OHA as a, you know, result of these significant financial resources we're given. And they list us a whole bunch of things. And the majority of the times, we are not at these events. And the role for this position and the, I think it is a an assistant in the next year, along with some pretty significant resources to equip them with the resources they need is to support us at all of these events, to include hopefully having an OHA tent with a Hawaiian registry card machine. So that people know, hey, I'm going to go to this event, OHA's a sponsor. I can bring my documents. I can get my Hawaiian registry card right there on site. We're nowhere even close to that. And that's what this position, that's what this role for this position is. So again, I, I'm, I'm reclassifying it to BSA needs to come back in front of this board because that's not the intent of this position. And we have to have a more robust presence at these events. There's a lot of things that that individual can do. Okay.
Chairman, yeah?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
So just as a follow-up and, and I was confirming with Corey my recollection of the conversation that Lisa was having with you at the, at the table. So she was saying that, you know, basically, they, they continue to need BSA support, specifically here on Oahu and having that be sort of a hybrid position. What I'm hearing from you is because the position description is still being put together with Lisa, that if she creates some kind of hybrid, which was, I think, was her request, that you wanted to come back before the board.
I mean, I think so. I think that's, that, that, that the board should need to express that because that's not what the position was designed to be in the budget. You know, this individual, whose sole purpose would be community and brand engagement, you know, exclusively around the number of sponsorships that we do every year on, not just Oahu, but neighbor islands as well. If there's a major event on Maui, this individual would be going to Maui, would be coordinating with Maui Island Trustee, would be working with the Maui Island BSA, would have equipment on every island that they could just fly in, load up, and head up to, you know, the, the, whatever event that's there, set up and, and be there. And I think it's unreasonable to expect a Monday through Friday, five days a week, or a BSA that is, is doing a hybrid teleworking plan, to be able to then also go to sponsorship events, the majority of which are on the weekends.
I'll communicate that to her. Thank you.
Yeah. So I think that needs to come back in from the board. And, and I think this is a high priority position that needs to be filled as, as soon as possible. So I'm going to continue to ask for an update on that and would appreciate that. Finally, the, I guess the last two would be the Controller. Position description out for that?
Yes.
Great. And oh, the Investments Land Manager?
That position description is currently with Lori.
Yeah. And then finally, I guess I missed the Research Systems Manager.
A lot, trustees. That position is currently, PD is currently being updated by Carla.
Okay. Okay, trustees, do you have any questions for HR, Human Resources, as it relates to our OHA staff vacancies? You know, this, at least at the chair's office, this is a high priority. I know it's a high priority for all of us, so it's going to be on our agenda every meeting. And we're going to continue to work on getting these staff vacancies down because we, I believe that we have given OHA the best tools that we have to recruit high caliber people. Doesn't guarantee you're going to recruit people here, but I think we've done everything we can to try and make OHA an employer of choice. And part of that is the Paid Family Leave Implementation Plan update. So Corey, can we please get an update on that?
Absolutely. So we currently have a proposal from Hartford and we have a meeting scheduled with them next week to go over their proposal with their representatives as well as Mercer. HR has already also been in contact with Hawaii Information Portal Payroll representatives to create a pay code because this is a new benefit that has not existed. In the state agency, there is no current pay code for this type of leave. So we have engaged with them to create such a pay code so that it can be tracked within the, and reported within the payroll system. Unfortunately, right now, as, as the latest response we got back from them, they don't have time to work on that project until November or December of this year. And the anticipated go-live date with that new pay code is not expected until February because of the programming and then the testing that's going to be needed to put that in place. That being said, HR is looking into how we can still effectuate it. It is it's just not gonna necessarily be captured in the system until that can be
Sure.
processed.
And you know, the 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 beauty of of that is that OHA is leading the way.
Right.
And the creation of a new passcode and the implementation of this at um Labor, Labor or D herd? Which department?
This is actually
Payroll system?
Yeah, central payroll system.
Central payroll system.
Bags, yeah.
Is something that can be a model for other state departments and agencies and I've heard from legislators that have um seen what we have done with our paid family leave program or at least what we passed and is excited to introduce legislation in twenty twenty six about it. So um that that's a good thing.
Right. So once they create it, that code could be used by any agency going forward.
So as as you're aware, the proviso language is to implement by one October. So we have to figure out between now, we have two and a half months to figure out a short term Band-Aid fix for the longer term solution so that um our employees, in the event that they have one of those two triggering events, can take advantage of that.
Yeah. Um, with the, so the proposal, if we do um move forward with that Hartford proposal, it would also actually um result in a decrease in our um TDI rates because part of that proposal does from Hartford does require that um they get both the the paid family leave administrative
And the TDI.
And the TDI.
Great.
Um, and so it would result in a decrease, a slight decrease in in our TDI premiums, which is also a plus. For that, there um as far as for for Hartford's implementation, they were looking at possibly a twelve, one or one, one effective data when they would be ready to actually implement should their proposal be accepted. As far as the third party administrative function.
Okay. Well, and I think, you know, for our OHA staff, it's important to know that this program has been adopted and we're in the infancy stages of implementation, but um you know, if if you are one of those staff members that um may qualify for this, I think having a one-on-one conversation with Cory to let them know would be really important, you know, whether it's caring for your mom, dad, kupuna, or um possibly preparing to welcome a new addition to your family. Um, I think knowing that you may be a qualified um recipient of this new benefit for um by OHA. Convey that to HR so that he can he can know what he's looking at in the October first to December timeframe and then and then beyond. And it's great to hear that it'll actually reduce our TDI rates, which which saves us some money.
Yes.
Trustee, uh Chair Emerita Lindsay.
Thank you. Um Chair, I wonder if you can share with uh with the board what was the basis uh for this um family leave? And I ask this question because you know, we gave a comfortable salary raise to almost all of our employees. And we teleworking them now. And then this is a third benefit that's um very, very substantial. How long are they able to take a leave and and for what purposes? You know, I I haven't been privileged to that information. So if you could enlighten me and and answer those questions, thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks for the question. So this program um does not exist anywhere in 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 government here in the state of Hawaii. It's been attempted through legislation, several attempts at the legislature, but has been unable to muster the required support. Other states have implemented um paid family leave programs of various different types. New York State is for one example. You can just Google paid family leave in the state of New York. This is different than what people usually confuse as FMLA. This is a completely different program. That's the Family Medical Leave Act. Um, it's federal policy. This paid family leave program is um an additional benefit that employers provide to their employees. And also used as a recruitment and retention tool. You know, to add as an additional benefit for the employee. So the proposed, or not the proposed, the adopted plan is a twelve week. It's a twelve week paid family leave pays you a hundred percent of your pay for one of two triggering events. One of them is basically parental bonding, so the birth of a child. If you have a child, whether you're the husband or the the wife, yeah, you are both entitled or whoever is the OHA employee is entitled to twelve weeks of paid family leave. Otherwise, the only options you have is to burn your vacation. I guess sick leave wouldn't, no, that would be vacation, right? And then you'd be forced to take up to up to a very limited amount of your sick leave, then whatever accrued vacation you have, and then that's it. And then you'd have to take leave without pay. Or if you are like most people in Hawaii, that live paycheck to paycheck and can't afford childcare, you gotta come back to work. And so what this program does is it supports um those employees that we have to give them that opportunity for twelve weeks to be at home uh with their newborn child. It also supports um uh surrogacy, if I'm not mistaken. And then the the other aspect of it is to support an ill family member for a um what has to be a qualifying um event. And so if your uh direct family member is hospitalized and is in um and requires your care and it is certified by a physician, um then you are be given the opportunity to care for your mom or dad. You know, while they need the most uh help from 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 you and that will also support the employee for twelve weeks. It can be taken in one week increments. It is, if I'm not mistaken, effective on date of hire. And we're working with Everett and Legal on ensuring that there is contractual language that ensures that um there is expectations that you're going to remain an employee of the Office of Foreign Affairs if this um benefit is triggered. And so I think that's I mean, I I hope that answers most of your your questions. You know, at the end of the day, it's um, I think it's
Basically, it's three months of extra vacation.
To care for a newborn child.
And only for a newborn child or a sick um parents.
Yes.
So that would eliminate everybody else.
Yes, it's only for those two. That's it.
So that's kind of discrimination. It's kind of discriminatory for the people in the middle.
No, I don't believe it's discriminatory. And many other states throughout the country don't believe it's discriminatory.
I wonder why they didn't pass our legislature then?
Keeps coming back. And maybe this will be the year that they do pass it. And paid family leave is something that is common in the private market. Maybe common is not the right word, but it it is.
But it is something that
It absolutely.
Yeah.
It's it's a value-based investment um by an employer that values their employees. It's it's the humane thing to do. Um, and uh any case, I hope that answers your question. Okay. Sure.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, for me, um, I I I don't know if people um have not gone through these type of things, but um, these type of things usually, you know, I wanna support the paid family leave because these type of things come up sometime without you knowing and happening in times where it might be a hard time. And for for me to question any of the people at OHA would be would would be very hard. So for me, I I just wanna make sure that like all these type of things, we we here to support our our staff too and we 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 want the best for them. And I I think the the most important thing is like, we we wanna be doing these things. We wanna be the first to do these things because we care about our staff. But um, the reason why I'm saying this is because I've been going to you a lot, you know, this past couple of months and years and it, you know, things come out of the blue and uh sometimes we need that support and I I I I know and understand that everybody in this building will go through some traumatic time. And I think to support them at those times is so important for all the people here at this board table to make sure we support our team. So thank you for all of it.
Yeah. Trustee Lapa.
Questions for Cory, um regarding the implementation of the uh paid family leave. Um, upon hiring, is there a um qualifying period? They have to work six months, a year before the ho- house is gonna be implemented?
Thank you, trustee. Um, I I'm sorry, I I gotta go back and look at the actual um plan documents, but I my recollection is that it was going to be, um, as Chair said, I think, you know, you would be eligible. Um, unlike with with FMLA or HFLL, there is a qualification period. But I would have to look at our actual plan doc or or what we're looking to propose for this benefit because it wasn't following um exactly either state HFLL or um federal FMLA. There was, there was some, some um blending, I guess I'll say.
So there's a state that in this leave is strictly for um illness and birth.
So one of the main differences between state and federal, right, the Hawaii family leave law versus the um FMLA. FMLA, there's a twelve um month plus a minimum amount of hours work per year in order to qualify. And that type of uh medical leave would actually apply to one's own serious health condition if it's uh certified as well as certain qualified family members. With HFLL, there's a six-month waiting period. Um, and then the benefit amount um is actually only, uh I believe, four weeks versus the twelve weeks with FMLA. And then with HFLL, the covered um family members is actually broader um than with federal law. And with HFLL, it does not apply to one's own. It's it's only for family members. So what we, uh again, you know, as as I recollect um with what we had sent for proposal um out for proposal and what Hartford has responded to is somewhat of a blend because I think we were looking at um utilizing the twelve weeks uh versus the four. We're also looking at um the broader coverage as far as family member. Um, so not only um I I believe it was, it was, you know, more reflective of the Hawaii-covered family members versus the FMLA. So there are some slight um blending. That that's what I was referring to when I used the word blending.
How would you know um during the time of leave that they're actually on leave? I mean, in other words, they're really sick or how how do you track that?
So that would be based upon the certification documents that were used, that the uh employee would have to fill out. So the employee would, I think we're planning to utilize similar forms, if not the same forms as for FMLA, which actually has a portion for the employee to fill out as well as for the physician to fill out um for the um family member or for the individual, depending on what the situation is. And in that form, the medical uh provider would certify the the basis for the leave, the duration of the leave, the um uh amount of time, um because there's also and I think we also had this as part of the uh benefit plan. Uh, you could also do intermittent. Right? So in some cases, the the care is not a uh consistent uh period of or needed daily care. It could also be just be for taking uh an individual to appointments, for example, or it could be to um uh there there might be other family members who are also helping and so you don't have to be the one to be there all the time. Maybe you're covering certain days and another family member is covering certain days. So um with with both uh FML and family, there's there's that flexibility as well. You could, yeah. And but in total, you can only use, you know, the twelve weeks.
Yeah. Thank you so much. And uh, you know, I'll just end on there, there are and this is just open source. There are thirteen states throughout the country that have paid family leave. And the list continues to grow. And I hope uh Hawaii is is next. And I think uh OHA will go down in history as leading the way for paid family leave in the state of Hawaii in a government agency. So, thank you. And we're moving on to the telework implementation update, which I know is already in effect. So we're eager to hear how things are going, Cory.
Uh, thank you, Trust Chair, Trustees. So we um executed it on July tenth, uh training for manager was held on July ninth. Um, and then and all OHA uh informational meeting was held on July tenth. Um, since then, we've been receiving um request forms uh to date. I think I've gotten fifty-four. Um, of the fifty-four, fifty um have been approved. And and I make up that those fifty individuals are, you know, teleworking um since since they were approved.
Sorry, I missed it. How much? How many?
Uh, fifty are currently approved and we received a total of fifty-four requests. So there's still four that are um pending or or not not approved as of today.
I would, oh, sorry, trustee Lindsay.
I I'd like to know how they're being monitored and if they are in fact working at home.
Um, they're supposed to be doing uh nine AM uh video check-in each day, um if they're teleworking. Um, and that's something that their managers are supposed to be doing. Um, I don't personally know whether whether or not you know, that is occurring. Um, that's not something HR has ability to directly monitor. I I can only speak for my two staff who are teleworking. I do have check-ins with them. You know, daily when they're out and then throughout the day we are in communication. So and I do see, you know, work product being created. So I, that's how I'm monitoring my two team members that are currently teleworking.
So uh do you have uh applications and approvals from the board suite?
I have received some from the boards.
I'm not asking who, I'm just asking number.
Uh, let's see, number. Currently, I have three.
Three?
Yes.
And is my understanding that they're only allowed to take three days a week?
Uh, up to three days.
Up to three days?
Yes, trustee.
I see. Cause I do notice that our board suite is pretty empty. So I just wondered how many got approvals from the trustees. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Hunan and trustee Suzaya. You know, one of the biggest things I've learned here at OHA is, you know, it's so important how we manage things and uh like social media, it's new ways of communicating and doing ads and stuff. And I think telework is something that is also new to us and changes sometimes can be hard for a a lot of us. But for me, I, we we wanna support our teams, our 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 the people who work here. And I think I think we're not the first to do this, to implement telework. I think there's a lot of telework uh going on outside of OHA too. Um, the one reason why I wanna support telework is because again, OHA is an organization that we need to support our 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 members, our our employees. And sometimes I think telework is more appropriate for these people at times than it is to be at work for them. And I I I just think it makes sense. It's hard to make sense when, oh, but they're at home, they can do whatever they like. But I don't wanna think that everyone's doing bad things or, you know, not doing the right thing. I, you know, part of this telework and how we manage is you gotta have trust in your team and 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 putting in the effort. And for me, I I just want to support everyone and make sure that, that. The way we implement this is not, you know, in, in a bad way to, I'm not here to single out people or anything like that. So I'm just hoping that the process that we use for teleworking makes sense and, and. This is something that we're, we're implementing and I don't want to make. The employee on the bad side or we, we talking about them, you know, this is right now, we're just talking about the implementation and, you know, update. How we can make this work. So I just want to make sure that we stay positive with all these things, you know. Change is hard sometimes. It's, it's hard for me too, but I, I, I like it, you know, I, I like it. So, thank you.
Want to share? Uh, my question, Cory, is there a list of approved or eligible telework? Employees, eh, approved employees who are eligible to telework?
Yes, we do have a listing of the employees who have requested and have received approvals.
Okay. Eligible, yeah, eligible. So is, is everyone eligible?
Um, not everyone is eligible. It is dependent upon, for example, like especially on our, our neighbor island offices. If there isn't um coverage, for example, right? And then uh newly hired individuals. Who are on their um introductory period are not eligible as well until they successfully complete that introductory period.
Okay, and where, where is that? No, but where, where, where's that memo?
That was part of the.
Okay, so that, that's in there, everything. So everyone should know exactly.
Yes.
Who is eligible. Okay, got it. Trustee Lapa.
Thank you Chair. Um, I'd like to. The um, for those who have been approved for telework, is it five days a week, four days a week, three days? Oh, at the most, oh. Or was it only the most three, four hour or staff or for anybody? I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, thank you for the question trustee. So up to three days. And then as far as which three days that would be uh dependent upon. Um, what's requested as well as what's approved by the um director?
Question? Yeah, no, I'll, I'll add to the discussion. You know, I, I do think that um. I mean, it would, it's, and this is just my own opinion, but I mean, I, I do think that our most senior members of. OHA. I, it was not my expectation that he would be teleworking. That they would not be, right? That's a very important distinction between senior management. And frontline PIA staff. Yeah, I don't disagree. And so I think that um, um. That would be my, I would be interested to see that um list. Uh, of those that are approved or eligible, let me say, to telework versus those that are not eligible to telework. Um, and if that doesn't exist, then that maybe is something that the board should revisit. And we have the ability to do that, you know, I mean, policies change and we have the ability to make that better. Um. You know, the, you can go to the D-Herd website and literally telework is in the, one of the upper bar links. Because it's such a big part of uh the state civil service program. And the teleworking guidelines, which are from January twenty twenty-three. Um, are a model of what we use to develop our telework program, but it can be adjusted and suited to the way we want to. Um, adjust it. And it would, would be my expectation that all senior members of the team are here at work every day. That are providing, you know, in-person guidance, support, visibility to oversight to staff. So. If, if right now you're telling us Cory that every employee at OHA is approved to telework. Then I think that uh is something that we may need to readdress.
Not every employee, but every position currently was approved for telework.
From the CEO on down?
Yes.
Okay. Um. What, what committee would telework live in? Would it originate in budget and finance? We could also just wave and bring right to the board. Don't need to do it today, but it, I think it's something, um, I said, same concerns as Chair shares and. Let's work with you Cory on um looking at um for the board's consideration, what specific um positions. Focused on the, the most senior executive leadership team of the org chart should not be allowed. Or not be given the opportunity to uh telework. Though I do think if there is a um. Extraordinary circumstance that, that, that may need to be considered. On a case-by-case basis, that you want some type of safety valve, just in case. So let's, let's work on that and maybe make that change.
Part of the rules in the telework um uh description is that telework is not going, should be not. Permissible for people to take care of their children, their babies. So that would be one of the most important thing for, let's say, one of the leaders to want to telework to watch the baby at the same time. But I do remember that that was one of the rules. So.
Go ahead.
Thank you Chair. Uh, I just wanted to clarify, I had uh misspoke earlier regarding the research systems manager PD, that is with HR, not with CARLA.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, employee handbook.
So the update for the OHA handbook is it's currently with communications. It's going to be um completed by August eleventh. That's the target date. Um, once we get that in hand, we will do a review of the final um with ELT. We will send it out to BOT. Um, shortly thereafter, and then it will be cascaded down to managing supervisors to review with their staff. And the expectation will be that by the end of August, August twenty-ninth, that we will. Um, have had all employees would have received and reviewed their copy of the handbook. And sign the completed acknowledgement form that would be forwarded to HR.
Great. Okay, trustees, any questions on that? Okay, if not, moving on to our fourth quarter performance evaluations. This would be for the period of April, May, June. Uh, typically we try and give sixty days to complete those performance evaluations, July through August. So quick update from Kapo Hana on that.
Cory will be doing the update.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, so um we uh actually needed to extend that out. So we did extend the due date for the fourth quarter FY twenty-five performance evaluations. Um, through August fifteenth. That is um ongoing and it is um, we, we have been receiving those completed reviews. Uh, but the agency does have until August fifteenth uh to complete those.
Okay, okay, great. And, and I'm going to speak for myself. I have not done my performance evaluations on my staff. And so I would encourage all of our trustees uh to do their individual performance evaluations for the fourth quarter for their trustee agents and secretaries. Um, I think we got to lead by example and um giving our employees that, that critical feedback is, is really, really important for their professional development. Uh, and their um nurturing. So August fifteenth is the date.
Yes, Chair.
And then we, as, as individual trustees would send those performance evaluation forms to you.
Uh, so once they're completed, they can be emailed or when you're sending it for signature, then can be copied to human resources that hr@oha.org.
Okay. And, and ultimately Kapo Hana um, a- as we get into the new fiscal year. These performance evaluations that we're doing, and there'll be what, four of them over the next fiscal year will. Factor into the performance merit-based salary increases that would be effective one July, right, of next year.
So I just want to clarify, um, so then we're going to have um the beginning of the year performance goal setting. And then we'll have a mid um, a fall check-in, which it won't be an assessment. It's more of a check, an evaluation. It's more of a check-in. And then we'll have a mid-year um evaluation and then a spring check-in. Again, the check-ins in fall and spring are really just to make sure that progress is being made. Um, and then fall and, excuse me, the beginning um of the year and the mid-year is really to make sure that um, that the goals are still aligned. And if anything needs to pivot, um, that mid-year check-in would be that opportunity. Um, and yes, they, these would inform the performance management system and how that will inform uh merit.
So the goals, that, that would be happening now then. Um, I guess we're like dual response.
Correct.
Doing the fourth quarter performance eval.
Correct.
And it's setting the goals for the next fiscal year's performance evaluations?
Yes. So we're, we're trying to get everybody out of the end of year um performance and we are actively working on the performance goal setting. Yes.
When do you think the check-in will be in the fall? Probably.
There's, do you focus?
November later?
Can we get back to you? There, there is a, there is a timeline for that. Yeah, um, we can forward that to the board.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think it's important that our employees are, are well, you know, um. Informed on this because um, you know, there are, like you said, there's specific goals that will need to be set. There's two check-ins, there's a mid-year eval. And all of that equates to what is, you know, potentially a salary-based increase for our OHA staff. Starting the next fiscal year, which is less than eleven months away. So it's important that we um communicate that. So. I guess getting the fourth quarter performance evaluations done soon as possible is really important. So we can start focusing on the goal-setting aspect of it. Okay. Trustees, anything on that? Okay, um, update on the fall twenty twenty-five OHA off-site workday. And just for some context for trustees, so this was something that um I, I've in the past brought up with Kapo Hana and we've discussed. Um, it used to be um a practice, maybe other trustees can speak to that, where we would. Plant trees, Aina, yeah, going out, whether it's doing a, a community OHA off-site, you know, um. Kukuneli Loko, Imafoos Park, whatever, team building, shares, uh, may I, and just take all of OHA to an off-site location for a. Opportunity to do that. So I think that's um, I, I, I assume that upon in our, and we're all in agreement on that. And so just to get an update since the fall is like upon us.
Yes, um, thank you Chair. Yeah, that, that has been something that has been in, in the works. I want to ask um if, if we can have Hailema to come to the table and share the update.
Hey. Hey. Hello trustees. Oh, she said Yorana. As a part of our renewed internal focus on quarterly OHA, capital O-H-A, OHA and Huakai paired with service learning. Our operations team has begun planning the first of these efforts for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, actually, yeah, I put five, sorry. We are pleased to share that our proposed inaugural Huakai will be a service day at Vahipanaf Kukuneli Loko. Which was done in the past, but we thought we would start on our service lands. In collaboration with the Hawaiian Civic Club of Wahiwawa and our partners at the University of Hawaii's Tropical Plant and Soil Sciences, UHTPSS. We are targeting Tuesday, September sixteen, twenty twenty-five with an alternate date of September thirtieth, should weather or other logistics require this change. Some key highlights, tentative arrival eight thirty to eight forty-five AM followed by protocol and work from nine to eleven. Work areas include Hawaiian Civic Club of Wahiwawa's core orchards and UH's Kahia Po plots. With one hundred and fifty participants split into rotating groups. Hawaiian Civic Club of Wahiwawa is open to hosting what they call a Kapiko Huakai Lohe Ana, a listening journey at the birthstones. We intend to bus stop, bus staff to the site so there be no personal vehicles. And bring our own, we're hopeful to bring our own luau facilities because we feel that's pertinent to this. Due to limited shade, we will provide water, some tents and first aid support. Lunch may be taken to goal or back at Nala Makukui, we're working on these details. The LLP will provide a flyer with key details, address code, recommendations for the day. And then of course, we plan to provide an honorarium for our Li Kuku community members. This Huakai represents an important opportunity for OHA to deepen our connection to Aina, uplift Vahi Kupuna. And strengthen internal OHA through shared kuleana. And I welcome any questions or feedback. Um, and this is in my capacity as the interim CEO over operations, IT and communications. One Chair.
Thanks Hailema for that uh detail.
And to save the date, we'll be going out for the date.
Okay, yeah, so September sixteen, Tuesday.
Is the targeted.
Eight thirty.
We're looking at weather forecast. So it may be the thirtieth, but we're going to aim for the sixteen first.
Okay, great. Um, I guess I. Maybe this is more of a, uh, and, and Everett type question, but. All trustees are allowed to attend? Yeah, doesn't touch the whole sunshine law deal? Yeah, yeah, okay, great. Awesome. What, how has it been in the past? Yeah, yeah. Okay, you're going to demonstrate the model. Yeah. Oh, great. All right, well, it'd be great to get maximum participation. I'll try to be there as well. And that's great. If we can have lunch there, that'll be even better. And any type of uh. Team building exercises would be wonderful too. Chance for us to interact with each other. Anyway, trustee Kaka.
Trying to recall what year it was, but uh there was another occasion at Kukuneli Loko where we were planting of native Hawaiian trees there in collaboration. Uh, with other entities and um there was a pretty. It was pretty well attended by OHA-wide as well as trustees. Um. I can say that because I was there as well. And it was, I recall during the holiday season. Um, which is sometimes nice because although it might rain, it will bring oftentimes cooler weather. So, and I specifically recall that because I remember wearing red as it was, yes, my red boots and um. Going uh after that directly to another event because it was the holiday season. Um, with laborers and so forth. So um. I think that's something for us to consider in the future when we're, when we're planning it, when we're going to be outside, given that um. I believe the temperature today is going to go into the high eighties. So that's just something to keep in mind when we are um. Tilling in the fields outside.
Great, Chair.
Yeah, may I also add and, and thank you for the comments. We, we had a long discussion over the period of time when we go, what time of day should we go at eight o'clock in the morning? And we settled on this period of, as, as the Kaukala is getting to that, that part of the lolo to make sure we're actually uh completed by that time. But I also wanted to provide that, that there may be um. Part of our family that physically will be unable to participate, but really want to. And, and we are going to provide a, if you're not gonna go, we're gonna provide another opportunity. Because I felt as the Senior Director of Hawaiian Cultural Affairs and my input in the performance management at the end of the year. and my input in the performance management at the end of the year, that we should include the service learning Huakai as part of our requirements at the end of year. So that if you're unable to participate in this part of the cultural learning as well as give back, we will have another opportunity for you to make that up. And that was important so that all of our OHA hundred percent can participate in some way or another, so, great.
Trustee Akaka.
Mahalo, uh, one other thought too is, um, there's something that Kamehameha Schools practices, is it annually where they have a, um, where all of Kamehameha Schools gathers from administration to Kumuu and so forth? Um, so if you're an employee there and there is the option of various cultural workshops from, in my recollection, it was, um, being able to, uh, create kappa. It was being able to, uh, hike in the, um, the Highlands behind the Kappa Lama Kula. It was, um, learning how to make, um, certain may I of native, native plants. And, uh, there were certain, um, opportunities to tour the Bishop Museum as the Bishop Museum was at, um, that time that I'm recalling, uh, the host location for some of these, uh, gatherings. So there were different options that one could partake in throughout the day. And I, I, I would be interested in OHA looking at that as an option, um, beyond, uh, tilling in the fields, but also being provided cultural, cultural opportunities that might not maybe be afforded if not for that opportunity to, to, um, do that as well as have, um, a boost in morale and cultural understanding in the very work that we do with the mission and the strategic plan in hand.
Awesome, Chair, if I may respond, so as a former vice principal at Kamehameha and a former planner of those service learning days, I've been trying to, uh, provide my, my thoughts on how, um, a program like we have, like this Huakai becomes a service learning project. And although this one is completely geared to the needs of, of Kukuneli Loco or as we perceive them to be, we are looking at rollouts and the Kamehameha one is once a year. Our, our cultural Huakai, uh, service learning is quarterly. So we'll, we'll go ahead and, uh, divide them over the year as well as future years, so that'll be our plan.
Yeah, trustee Ahuna.
But my question is, um, will we ever have off-site workdays on outer islands too or anything like that? I know we did a, a Huakai to Lahaina, that was great in the bus, but I'm talking about OHA instead of just us, you know? Will, will, will there be any on outer islands or if there's a chance to do that?
That would be a wonderful experience and we should, um, that would be something that if the trustees can provide a budget for that, we can all go. It will also give us opportunity to, for those off-island who are unable to come on that day. Although we are expecting that our neighbor island family members do come on the sixteenth. But let's say that didn't work out for our staff on the islands, then we might seek opportunities on each island for those folks to, to join. Or there may be something, as trustee Akaka shared, where the day is split and some may choose, we may do something where it's on different islands the same day. That gives us a great opportunity to plan for, but of course, budgeted will be a concern that needs to be forecasted ahead.
And then I think a lot of it is working with the organizations that are hosting us, um. The reason why I'm saying this is because I really want OHA to go to Aloha Aina to see and we need to mihi with them and, you know, and make sure that they understand that we behind them, you know? That's a great organization that OHA is not behind and I just feel like, so, you know, I don't know what happened or where, but I think we should be more in a supportive, uh, directive. And I think, uh, workday over there would be great, they would love to have us, you have hundreds of acres of loais and it's, it's, it's a, it's a great thing for all of us to get back into the Aina, yeah, so thank you so much, you work that out.
Okay, mahalo, great to hear, Hailema, thank you. Okay, trustees, now we're gonna go back, I think we knocked out everything we couldn't get done the last meeting. So now we're gonna go back to items A and B. And this is an update on the fiscal year twenty twenty-six organizational chart that was adopted by the board via action of B F twenty-five fifty-one. Uh, and we're gonna also, basically the same subject, so discuss the fiscal year twenty twenty-six staff salary implementation, um, plan and update. And this is a continuation of the conversation we had about two weeks ago regarding the implementation of the board's adopted organizational chart and salary rates that we had set. Um, and there were some, the, you know, certain statements that were made regarding that implementation, we'd asked, um, for it to be implemented by early August, it's my understanding that, uh, um, certain pay rates were um, reflected in the most recent OHA paycheck. But based on the, um, statements that were made two weeks ago, I wanna, I did some follow-up and I wanna make sure that set the context for this conversation. Um, I spent about an hour on the phone with the Director of D Herd and asked, uh, several questions as it relates to, um, the organization of OHA as well as the, um, salaries that were implemented by the ad hoc committee and finally those others that were leveled and adopted in the board's budget. Um, and so first and foremost, OHA, as you, you well know, is a quasi, you know, coined a quasi-state agency, yeah. Um, we operate with significant autonomy and independence and that allows flexibility in how we manage our operations, how we organize the organization, and it also includes salaries, right? OHA is not, um, bound by D Herd's policies. It's, we don't have collective bargaining. Um, there are applicable general labor laws that apply, Fair Labor Standards Act is one, which requires compliance with the federal minimum wage. But the Hawaii state minimum wage is higher than the federal minimum wage. Overtime pay for non-exempt employees that work forty hours a week. And there's limitations on comp time in lieu of overtime, so that's the Fair Labor Standards Act, it's federal law. Of course, there's also anti-discrimination laws that, um, OHA must avoid practices that lead to discrimination complaints, this is on the base of r- j- uh, race, gender. But beyond that, this board has the statutory power to set position titles and the salary rates for our employees. You have the latitude to do that, now there are general best practices that should be followed. Um, but we are not obligated to follow D Herd's policies. We can use them as a framework and I believe the ad hoc, um, committee did use D Herd as a framework for compensation structure and that was to ensure some level of fairness and competitiveness. I'll also add, I know the ad hoc committee as part of its metric utilized the MIT Living Wage Calculator for salary schedules, um, D Herd doesn't use that. Um, not saying there's anything wrong with that, but it is also, and was emphasized that, um, using the Hawaii Employers Council, which we are a part of, right? And I, and we have membership in that, and using surveys from third-party data vendors give D Herd the opportunity to ensure that they're paying the right salaries to its employees, they're not underpaying them, they're not overpaying them. And it helps them in the negotiation process when they need to collectively bargain with the public sector unions. Um, as you are well aware, our ad hoc salary committee met from February through May. Um, and we looked at, they looked at salaries for staff that were making less than a hundred thousand dollars. That was a yardstick, the idea was we're not enriching the top, we are lifting the bottom up. And those that had been at OHA for two years or less or were making more than a hundred thousand dollars were not considered because their salaries were already set at market rate benchmarks over the last two years. Now, there may be a few one-offs that are really important for recruitment, retention or the work that they do. And those were addressed by the ad hoc committee and, and they're also subsequently addressed by the administration through the, um, leveling of certain positions that were adopted by the board. Um, when I asked the Director about position title changes, this is a common, um, practice at D Herd, it's called a reassignment. It's done all the time. They never require reapplication for a position. And they recently retitled Secretaries to Administrative Assistance, basically within the same scope of work. And the reason why they don't require reapplication is it would result potentially in a reduction of force, potential termination, and that's clearly unnecessary unless the position duties or the qualifications change dramatically, like you're going from one pile to another pile. The only time that applicants are potentially required to reapply for their position is if there's competition. Meaning you have three people in the same category. And if we created a new position, it's unfair for one of those three if they were named. But in a situation where you have one person, there's no excuse for implementing the re-titling of that title and the implementation of that salary. Regarding TA or what is called temporary assignments, because that is a code you will see on one of the products that Cory is, um, provided to us. D Herd does do this. And the range that they do it in is between five to twenty percent, generally speaking. The amount of the percentage allocated is based on the levels that you're performing, so if you're here and you're filling an interim role, three, four levels up, there is a range of what that interim TA, um, percentage-based increase is. But if you are at the same level, there is no TA. So if you're a director and you're filling a director's role, there is no TA at D Herd. And if it's one level up, ah, it might be somewhere between eight, ten percent. If it's a huge level up, it might cap out at twenty percent. But that needs to be a policy that we have, and I don't know if we have a TA policy that the board has adopted. Well, that's past practice, this is a new board. And we might be underpaying somebody who's filling a critical role. Right, it's been a practice, right? So there is, um, a standard that D Herd uses and I think we should adopt that standard based on, um, H R's recommendation, board adoption and, um, implementation in our employee handbook and the compensation. I will add, and I think this was under your leadership, Chair, a few years ago, because trustee aide and secretary positions, especially in the chair and the vice chair's offices had lagged behind, right? There's a number of years where there wasn't pay that was addressed. This board adopted an action item ten and fifteen percent. Right? And but we, uh, my point is we adopted it as an action item. And we should adopt TA policies for the administration. If it's a step up, you're entitled to it, if it's a lateral, you are not. That's, I'm just saying what D Herd does, right? Um, and so the key takeaways are, is that this board and OHA has the autonomy as a quasi-state agency to set its own salary, set its own organizational policies, provided they comply with two important things, F L S A and anti-discrimination laws. D Herd policies are not binding, they can guide OHA's practices for fairness and competitiveness. Reapplication for title changes or pro- promotion opportunities is unnecessary unless there is a competitive process that is warranted, meaning there are multiple people in the same pile that need to compete for that position. And that temporary assignments to higher-level roles do justify a pay differential as long as their role, higher level role is higher than what they're currently at. But no additional pay is required for lateral or subordinate duties. So with that being said, you know, I was, um, surprised, I think I got an email popped up from a memo from H R telling me what my new salary was on October third or fourth, I don't know if you guys got that as well, I'm assuming every employee at OHA got that. And there was a lot of calls and a lot of surprises. Forty-eight people, um, you know, were affected by whatever policy was or practice was implemented in the most recent payroll, and so this discussion is gonna center on that. And I wanted to frame what the Director of D Herd informed me in terms of what this board and what we did on June thirtieth concerning salary rates, position titles and organizational chart implementation. With that, I will, uh, there were forty-eight individuals that either got pay increases or paid decreases. And that was not expected. And many people were upset. Many people were confused. We've, at least our office fielded several calls. It didn't happen at this board table.
And, and that is correct, uh, Chair, if I may add, uh, the point of the ad hoc committee was to address the disparities in the pay. Um, make it equitable across the organization, right? And, um, close the gap in a sense, and that's why we looked at hundred thousand and below.
Thanks for that clarification, so we'll hand it over to Cory, um. I had expected a, um, revised organizational chart to reflect the board's, uh, intent as well as the implementation of salaries, uh, effective this week, based on what the board adopted. And based on the memos that went out, calls that some of us received and the documents that you provided to the board, um, which in my opinion are for informational purposes only, they are not adopted by this board. Can you please explain what's going on?
Before he starts, I just, just as a member of the ad hoc committee, I wanna say that we did make general, uh, and not individual decisions. And I did expect the, um, administration to level off some salaries because by, maybe by accident, we could have, uh, raised a person's salary above their, uh, their supervisors. So I would expect an adjustment there, but that's what I, I thought we would leave up to H R to make sure that everything was fair at the very end.
And it's my understanding that after the ad hoc committee published its report and there was two months before the board was adopted, that much of that work was done.
Okay.
In consultation with Cory, trustee Suzu's staff, our staff, anyway, trustee Suzu.
I, I would like to add, because as much as I want to take full responsibility for what the conversation we're gonna have in a, in a, in a moment, beyond the ad hoc committee, right, it came to the board, there was some time after that ad hoc committee report was published, right, to the time that the board adopted a personnel budget. Right, and so that's out of the ad hoc committee's hands, it was recommendations like trustee is saying. Um, it was, and you know, could have gotten them all right or some of them wrong, but at the end of the day, the board made a decision and created a budget for personnel, so mahalo, Chair.
Okay, yeah, let's, um, let's hear from the admin and then I'm sure that'll trigger, um, subsequent questions, so Cory, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair, trustees. Um, I, I guess what I'll say, or what I'll start off with saying is that prior to the budget process, uh, administration had certain processes or, um, practices in place and how H R moved forward with the recommended changes, whether that was with the, um, org charts or with the, uh, budget, budget, budgeted salary adjustments were done according to that, um, past practice, um, that, that we were following. According to that um past practice um that that we were following for consistency purposes. I mean, I'd also like to add that um in addition to um. What the the D Hurd uh director had shared about F L S A as well as um discriminatory uh protected classes. You know, even though we are a quasi-government agency, there are other laws, labor laws that we still. Um need to conform to um. You know, with regard to fair labor practices, fair pay practices, so um that, those two specific. Federal regulations are not the only two that, you know, we have to still um. Abide by and conform to.
Then on, just not to inter, well, I mean, I'm gonna interrupt you, because what we need to say is accurate, so I need you to state. The specific labor laws that apply to OHA. I, I don't, I don't want general, like I want specific. What are the, what are the fair labor practices?
Well, for, for example.
Or that we are required to adhere to. That would not allow you to implement what this board adopted in salary and title.
I, I'm sure, I'm sorry, I can't. Think of the specific.
Well, you can't say that. I mean, to, in all due respect, you can't say that but not. Give us the statute and the law. Like I gave you F S L A, I gave you anti-discrimination laws. What else is there? So that this board can make an informed decision. What other laws? Gotta be specific, Cory.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, Chair. At, at, at this very moment. I can't, can't identify the specific names of the, of the laws. All I was trying to do is clarify that. As a federal, uh I mean, as a, excuse me, state employer. State agency, there still are other uh employment laws that we need to conform with. And that was just a clarification statement in regards to the two that you had specifically mentioned.
Not to be disrespectful, but as a director of human resources, and as someone that has how many years of experience doing this?
Over twenty-five.
Over twenty-five years, I would expect you to be able to tell us what those laws are. At least one of them, without looking at a phone.
Yeah. So it would depend on the specific circumstances of. Um I guess the, the specific case, right? But uh for example. With regard to one of the adjustments that we made um for trustee aides. I'm, I'm referring to the first uh yellow role in my, in, in the uh. Pay adjustment spreadsheet that I had provided earlier. Or provided in preparation for this meeting.
I mean, I'll tell you what. Fair examples of fair labor practices are paying workers on time.
Right.
And paying them what they're due. I think we checked that. Honoring minimum wage and overtime laws. I think we checked that box. Providing safe working conditions, not retaliating against whistleblowers or union organizers, bargaining in good faith. If we were to collectively bargain and preventing discrimination and harassment in the workplace. That's fair labor practices at a national level. We have other stuff, right? National Labor Relations Act. Fair Labor Standards Act. But you can't tell us, like, you can't implement something that this board adopted based on a law that you can't explicitly state. Is, is my point.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that that's why we didn't implement what was provided. And if, if you allow me, I can explain why we made the adjustments that we made. So.
Sure.
With regard to the.
I just, I gotta clarify. When something comes up, because it's important, because I don't want to keep coming back to this table to have this conversation. I really want to move on. We got other really good work to do. I just want the administration to implement what this board adopted. So we can do other work, and it's, it's frustrating. We've got to keep coming back and having this conversation, so. Please continue.
Thank you, Chair. No, and I appreciate um, you know, the conversation. Um so for example. With the first highlighted role, one of the things that we had noticed when we were reviewing the spreadsheet. Or the adjustments was that there were certain uh trustee aides that were not um. Given the same uh rate change as the majority of the other trustee aides. And we didn't understand or necessarily know why, but given that they all perform very similar jobs. Um at the same levels for the, for the, you know, as far as we understand, we felt that. Their adjustment should be consistent for parity sake, so we gave all of them the same adjustment, which was the nineteen and a half. Why the nineteen and a half? That was in part of a result of the um. Gap that one of our beneficiaries had pointed out previously with regard to those transitions in the um. Adjustment uh scales, right? The, the twenty-two versus the eighteen versus the fourteen, twelve. Uh specifically, if someone is in that cusp area at the high end of a range. Versus the beginning of the next range, that it could result in people who are paid less initially, not being paid more. So to address that. To uh, you know, Rochelle and um. Summer's credit, they had made an adjustment um for, for those reasons to have parity and have um equity. And for consistency purposes, we applied that nineteen and a half percent. To all of the trustee aides. That, that was a result of one of the differences of, for example, with that first line item. And that's why that one resulted in a higher amount than what was previously um budgeted. Um the second one, uh the grants manager, we noticed that that one had a fourteen percent adjustment. But based on the um parameters that the ad hoc group had. Um established, that how working group had established specifically regarding. Again, this was the percentages, right? Based on that individual's prior um compensation amount, the appropriate. Rate change was twelve percent. So we again made that change for. Consistency and, and parity purposes.
I mean, that's your opinion. That's not what the board adopted.
Right, but some of the things that the board also adopted, for example, were based on, and this one, again, were based on budgeted. Mid-range amounts that weren't necessarily what an individual. Um based on our practice should be paid, and, and these were more specific to vacant positions. If we had only offered what was budgeted or what was um on that sheet, then. The amount of pay would not necessarily be equitable or fair. It could result in someone getting paid more than what. Should be, should be paid based on their experience, or it could result, for example, in us not paying someone who should be. Paid more based on that same experience, which could also cause us to lose candidates. So. We made adjustments based on, again, different reasons, but for. Consistency, for fairness, for um parity. I, I understand this.
I understand the vacant positions, and we gave you the latitude to set. The final pay rate based on an individual's qualifications. I'm talking about. The filled positions.
There, there were also. Some filled positions, for example, that, again, based on what parameters were set by the ad hoc committee. For example, with myself, right? In, in the budgeted item, for me, there was a adjustment made, but given the parameter of anyone who was being paid. Over a hundred thousand, not being eligible, we didn't make that adjustment.
That wasn't your choice to make. The board adopted a budget that paid the human resources director a certain dollar value.
Okay.
And you don't have the authority to reduce that value. It's not the person, it's the position. And, and, and you guys did that. The twenty-three of our employees, forty-eight percent of OHA's, of the proposed salary changes, twenty-three people. Experienced. Surprise at the least, based on the memo they got and the pay they received. Okay, twenty-three people, because they're looking at what the board adopted on the thirtieth of June. They're planning. They're financially planning. And to decrease their salaries. I don't think you have the authority to do that.
Okay, I.
In addition, you increased. Twenty-five individuals or fifty-two percent.
Yes, and again, for some of those, it was because of the parameters that we had.
But why wouldn't you bring that back before the board first? That's my issue, is it has to be brought back in front of the board. I don't mind if you have discrepancies. You gotta bring it back in front of the board. You have to justify it. Can't be your own opinion. It's gotta be grounded in some type of foundational policy, and this, this board needs to adopt it.
Okay.
And we can properly message it to people rather than.
Um, Mahalo, Mr. Chair. If I may, um, you know, Cory, I know you're a part of the ad hoc, so I know you know what the intent was of this ad hoc, right? And we all signed off, right? But we keep referencing, or you keep referencing the parameters of the ad hoc. That ship has sailed. Once this, it comes to the board table. It's what the board decided on. There's no parameters of ad hoc, whatever the suggestion was, you feel that you, 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 they have arranged a fifteen to twenty percent. That was a suggest, suggestion back then. The board adopted. So I think the question is from that point on, how did you make those decisions, right?
Thank you, Vice Chair. So again, our, our practice, and I guess I want to also clarify that. HR doesn't, uh to Chair's point, doesn't have the authority. In and of ourself to make those kinds of adjustments. There is a process um that we've been following that has been in place that. And, you know, longer than I've been here, um I'm not sure exactly when it started, but we do go through a process. Um and we do try to apply that consistently, which is similar to what we did here. Part of that review process is um. That it has to be reviewed not only by myself, but by the uh CFO, the COO, as well as the CEO. Before any of those adjustments can be made. Um and we did that for all of these salary adjustments. Those, those. Changes were um put through that process. Um and, and again, following that process, there were some additional adjustments that were made. Um according, according to, to that same process. So I, I guess I would like to just have that clarified, that this is not something that I myself. Made any decisions on, or that, you know, was not done through a consistent process, and. We were trying to um again. Make sure that what was done was fair, um and I know that's in the eyes of, of each individual. Um but, but through a consistent process and looking at the other um adjustments, trying to be. Consistent in that respect and fair in that respect.
I'll give you, I'll give you an example. I, I know you're walking through certain positions. The Director of Advocacy. The board set that salary at a hundred and fifty thousand. You reduced it to a hundred and twenty-nine thousand for pay parity. As compared to. The Director of S and I, O E V. Which I don't even, I can't even figure out how you got to the number. That's one of my next questions. Director of Advocacy oversees sixteen people. His law degree. Making the same amount as the director oversees two people. Where's the, how, how do you rationalize that? And my point is, is that this board made a decision because of that individual's, not individual, that position's responsibility. Breath and depth of work. To set that salary rate. And you changed it. And that person got a twenty. Something thousand dollar reduction in their pay. And I think they were pretty shocked and surprised. When they got that memo. Because you got to understand, they're looking at June thirtieth. They're planning on June thirtieth. Our performance-based merit increases for next year are based on June thirtieth. As, as an example for that position, Director in S and I, if you can help me clarify. That line, that salary is a hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. You can look at it on your, on your sheet. The new amount is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine twelve. What is one eighteen zero nine two?
Wait, I'm sorry. This was the Director of S.
Director of S and I, it's highlighted, it's on the second page. And I don't mean to highlight any particular person, I'm not highlighting individuals, I'm just looking at the line item. Right? If that salary prior to the board's budget was one fifteen nine eighty.
Got it.
And you adjusted that for a twelve percent pay parity for a director, which is the same metrics you use for the Director of Advocacy. That number doesn't even match. One fifteen nine eighty times twelve percent is not one twenty-nine nine twelve. And then in addition to that, if you're saying this position requires a ten percent temporary assignment. Increase, then it's well over one twenty-nine nine twelve.
No, so, um, just, sorry, Chair, just to clarify, the one twenty-nine nine twelve includes the twelve percent parity adjustment. Plus the ten percent temporary assignment, adjustment.
That's a twenty percent, two percent pay increase?
Yes.
Yes, based off of one fifteen nine eighty?
No, based off of what their prior.
The prior was one fifteen nine eighty. Yeah, no, but. You know, you know what I'm saying? The one fifteen nine eighty was the previous salary. So you're adding a twelve percent on top of one fifteen nine eighty and a ten percent TA?
Correct.
So that's a, oh, from one fifteen nine eighty, that is an additional twenty-two percent increase.
That's what happened, yes.
Can you do that math and tell me what that number is? Because I guarantee you it's not one twenty-nine nine twelve.
No, so. This individual was actually at one oh five, starting.
No, they weren't. Their salary prior to the June thirtieth budget adoption was one fifteen nine eighty. I mean, I can show you the Excel spreadsheet from April that shows one fifteen nine eighty. I'm one hundred percent positive.
I, I mean, I'm pretty sure I know who we're talking about, and prior to that, the pay was at one oh five.
Would you like to see a spreadsheet? I mean, this is a spreadsheet that the ad hoc committee used to do their work.
Well, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. If I can point out something which will maybe help you, Cory, it's the same. We're talking about the twelve percent pay parity for the director level, so let's just point out another position. Director of Research and Evaluation. So that position is one fifteen two two four, which is now with the twelve percent increase, one twenty-nine. So it would make sense if the one twenty-nine was without the ten percent. For him, for that position's. Uh interim role.
What we did is, we took the individual's A prior.
Right.
I believe, again, it was one hundred five um. Approximately hundred five, and we added the twelve percent parity and then the ten percent um. Temporary assignment adjustment on top of that, and that was how the one twenty-nine nine twelve was derived.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, prior that individual was at one oh five four three two.
Not according, not according to the June first spreadsheet that I see here that shows that position at one fifteen nine eighty. Which is exactly what was in the budget that we passed.
I'm sure, I, I don't know what to say, I, I mean that.
It doesn't matter. One fifteen nine eighty is what the budget, what we adopted, and that's what should have been. Applied to this particular position. Regardless of twelve percent, regardless of ten percent, that is the number. Yeah, Hulu, go ahead. I mean, trustee Lindsay. Sorry about that.
This is my name. So, in, in comparing the Director of Research and Evaluation at one fifteen two two four. And um the Director S and I, O E V, uh at one fifteen nine eighty. Um and the, and both of them coming out to one twenty-nine zero six zero. And one twenty-nine nine twelve for the twelve percent.
Sure.
Where's the ten percent for the S and I Director? That's her salary today, for example? And, um, what you're saying is the Director of Research and Evaluation, what was her, um, salary? One oh five two? Because they're coming out to about the same amount of money. One twenty-nine. And that's what we're we're mystified about.
Clarify since since, uh, summer and worked with the Ad hoc Committee staff. So the one fifteen nine eighty. Partially correct. The salary was. One oh five? And the reason why it was one fifteen nine eighty is because we were applying the ten percent TA. And that's the number that we included. So actually, that person got. An increase when the board adopted the budget. And now you're further increasing it. To one twenty-nine. That that's the. And I I don't know how you. Justify that versus the Director of Advocacy and and reducing that person's salary by. To almost twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand dollars. But Cory, the Ad hoc Committee specifically focused on a hundred thousand or below. And. You should not have just unilaterally approved that increase without bringing it back to the board. Yeah, one one more question, um, cause you mentioned adjustments several times. When do we do a budget adjustment? Cause that's essentially what you did, right? Did a budget adjustment to the June thirtieth. Board-approved budget. Wasn't a realignment, right?
Correct.
It was an adjustment. So when does policy? Dictate an adjustment?
Yeah, I I don't know how to.
I'll tell you. It's in the executive policy manual. Section. Series three thousand. It says, as the Bionium budget is prepared and authorized only once every two years. In accordance with the state's Bionium, it may be necessary. To update and make adjustments. To the budget for changes that may have occurred since the budget was passed. So what changes occurred in the last thirty-seven days? That required you to immediately do a budget adjustment? Budget adjustments are like for. Big events. That provide limited discretion in making those adjustments.
And I guess my only response is that. We weren't looking at it as a budget adjustment. We do have, or we do, um, make, you know. Adjustments to people's pay, um. As appropriate. And and again, it's not a unilateral decision made by myself. I I am the one who, I am part of that approval process, and I am the one who needs to, um. Effectuate it, but those those decisions are not solely mine. Um, I I cannot make.
Who else makes those decisions? Who's the we?
It it would go through that review process, which is the. HR Director, the CFO, the CEO, COO, and the CEO. All all of them need to approve it. Before. We can do anything in HR.
As much work that this board did to address salaries this year. Through the Ad hoc Committee. Through the leveling that the board. Um, accepted from the administration and its June second proposed budget and what we finally passed. That needs to come back before this board. If you wanna make an adjustment.
Okay, I.
I mean, that, I mean, that's just one. I'm just one of, one of nine, nine, right? That's my opinion, and that way. The other. You know, the the forty-eight individuals that were either surprised or shocked. Maybe both. Like know ahead of time. And that. We can communicate that to them, and that then we can update that in the budget, we can update that in the FY twenty-seven number. And that it, there's some rationale to it and that it makes sense. I'm just gonna call it out, right? We gave a very, very healthy increase. To the. Director of Investments, which we also changed the title on. Highest-paid employee at OHA, three hundred thousand dollars. And we're gonna give another thirty thousand dollars. For a TA increase?
Again, that that was based on what our practice is.
There has to be some executive administrative level discretion.
I agree, and that. For us is following that procedure of going through the approval process.
Would it be helpful for this board to direct you through an action? Of what to do? Because it seems like there's clearly a disconnect between. What the board adopted on June thirtieth regarding positions. Salary rates, title changes, and all I'm saying is. If you want to make those changes and maybe your justifications are. Grounded and solid. You gotta come back to the board, and we're happy to entertain those.
Okay, and Chair, you know, again, I apologize, that was not my.
Not to me. It's to the twenty-three people that got pay reductions. I mean, that's 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 not just me, that's legitimate, Cory. Any other trustees? Chair Maradale?
Well, there were, uh, other than the, um, investment person, which I was shocked at to hear, because. That was not discussed in the Ad hoc Committee, the committee. I'm also shocked that, um, the CF- CFO having a salary of, uh, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. I I I actually don't think anybody should earn more than the CEO. I I believe that, because the CEO had has the most, um. Trying position of all the positions in OHA. I mean, she has to deal with nine of us, and that's already a problem.
Well, the UH football coach makes more than the governor.
I know.
So it's not always apples to apples, but I will say the CFO position. Is the top of the range. And it is because we had struggled in May and June to recruit a CFO. So that is not. That is the upper limit. We're talking a super-qualified individual, it gives admin and HR the latitude to go between. What the previous CEO was making, which was about a hundred and fifty-six thousand. To two hundred and fifty thousand, so we can recruit a CFO that. Will be responsible for a more robust financial services team, given that we are recruiting a controller and these other different positions.
The CFO does fall under the CEO, though, and therefore should not be earning more than her. Was that a salary range between the one fifty and two fifty?
It's a range.
It's they, when they are interviewed and so forth.
Be one sixty.
They could, okay, so that's.
At the HR's discretion, but it helps the recruitment, because we were, I mean, States and I had this conversation about. Um, having trouble recruiting a CFO, most applicants are from the mainland. Um, and and as as we're, you know. Uh, we're we're previously briefed, we don't even have a CEO, if CFO is being interviewed in the pipeline right now. So I mean, I'm concerned. Is that what we did here? Is we reduced that salary by ninety-two thousand dollars? On paper?
Um.
What is that? Just so I can clarify. Are you are you now saying that the top range for the CFO is one fifty-seven eight seventy-two?
Are we talking about the the CFO position? So. Uh, no, so that position, again. For consistency, because it was over the hundred K, we did not make any adjustment.
Trustee Suzu's point, hundred K is not your metric anymore. Ad hoc did its work. Board adopted the budget. We put two fifty. We need to recruit at two fifty. At the max. And not one fifty-seven eight seventy-two, period.
Well, I mean, going forward with the current recruitment, it would be based on the range for that position. It wouldn't be at the one fifty-seven. This was, at the time, the prior CFO was still in place.
Uh, yeah, no. At what time?
Th- this was effective July one, and the prior CFO was still in place, so we did not make any adjustments to the prior CFO's. Compensation, which was the one fifty-seven.
If we get a CFO in the next month, what is the maximum amount that we are going to pay that CFO?
It's gonna be based on the established range.
What is the number, what is the top line?
Um, I'm sorry, Chair, I off the top of my head.
It should be two hundred and fifty thousand. Cause that's what this board directed. The administration and the HR to recruit at. So I'm on, I'm not understanding. The logic behind. Why it's not at the number we set it at? And and I guess this is, this is accurate, like, is it? Your job to second-guess what the decisions that this board makes? Or not?
No, it's not.
It's not. So just adopt what we passed. And if you think there's changes that need to be made, bring it back to us. We're welcome to make those adjustments.
Okay, again, just for clarification. There's ranges established for the positions. The budgeted amounts are the medians usually. Uh, or as far as I understand it, and the amount that the individual is paid is based upon their experience. It's, it it could be higher, it could be lower, provided there's budget.
Cory, we established a new baseline on June thirtieth.
Okay.
For every single position.
Alright.
The Director of Advocacy and every other person deserves what this board adopted.
Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Cory, I just wanna know, since you're talking about experience, um, and we're trying to say that the board adopted something, there's a new baseline. There's a directive, right? In so many ways. Um, I wanna know that anyone who got an increase, and let's just talk about the twelve percent for the directors, because we're talking pay parity. Did we just give them twelve percent, or did they? Right? Because the Ad hoc Committee recommended, and I believe we adopted, because it's under the state as well, there's a flex hiring rate policy form. Did any of those directors fill that form out? Because we're talking about experience now, because there's an opportunity with that form to potentially move up beyond. And to justify, because we wanna be able to justify. Did any of the directors fill that form out?
No.
So nobody? So how did we get to the twelve percent?
The twelve percent was arrived in a conversation that occurred, um. Between myself, um, COO and CEO at the time, um, and that was based on parity. Um, that then went through the review process. Um, before it was actually finalized and implemented.
So parity, so parity on this level, right? This level. Again, I don't wanna add, uh, reference the Ad hoc Committee, but the Ad hoc Committee was established by this board. To look at the differences in pay. Such a wide range. Of pay in this organization. We created this ad hoc, right, to close that gap. Right? So there's no complaints from our staff. We're trying to take care of them, uh, telework, FMLA, whatever may be. We're trying to take care of employees, retain our employees. So now, don't you think, and Mr. Chair, if I may follow up on another question. We got these guys here, and we got these guys here, and they're all family, they're all Ohana. Now, we increased these guys. To make it a level, almost a level playing field, not really, but closer. Now, we get here, the board approves that. Now we go here, and we put these guys up. So now, Cory, since you wanna reference the Ad hoc Committee. What was the point of an Ad hoc Committee? And addressing pay disparities across the organization if we're gonna continue to do this? Right? So that's my question. And maybe it's not solely you, maybe it's Kapuana, whoever, COO, like you referenced, collaborative effort. But for me, I I'm. It wasn't me who made the decision. It wasn't Chair Kaheli who made the decision, or Hulu, or you as being a part of the ad hoc. It was this body here at the table. Right? We wanted to take care of our staff. Wanted to retain them people who were leaving for many different reasons, but pay was one of them, and it went on for so long. And now we're doing the same thing. But there's no justification, because I asked you, is there a flex rate policy form that was filled out in order for us to say, you know what? They meet the qualifications, they got this degree, that degree, they're beyond what the job description. Says, and we're giving them this. There's nothing. So at that point, it tells me that we're just operating because that's what we did last year, two years ago. Putting it on the prior administration, the prior administrator. You know, I I don't wanna hear that, and I think this board doesn't wanna hear that. And Cory, I'm not blaming you. I'm trying to figure out a solution here. Because this is not what we agreed upon. And then if we didn't agree upon it, there's a back and forth. Especially between the Ad hoc Committee and. The time the board adopted this budget. There was more than enough time. I don't care what we're all doing. This is huge. Right? This is big, especially for you. If there's concern going back and forth, wait, let's bring it up, let's address it. Bring it back to the board as an action item like Chair is saying. There's opportunities. Right? And maybe I should be talking to Kapuana about this, not you, but there's opportunities to bring it back to the board. Right? You disagree with something, bring it back to the board. Right? That that that's all. Let the body make the decision. Once we do. We should be adopting, implementing. That's what your job is, right? Implement. Administer. Right? And so that's how I see it. And I again, I'm not going after you, we're trying to figure this out together, but I I don't really have the answer. Because I think the questions that are being asked are not being answered right now, so I don't know how to proceed right now. But say that I think these numbers are, are are not. They're falsified to a certain extent. Because there's no justification, and for this body, I think we need to justify, because we're the ultimate decision-makers here.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Give another example. Director of Office of Technology Services. Board adopted on June thirtieth, one thirteen seven thirty-six. You adjusted to one thirty-nine six fifty-six. The start date for that position was five sixteen twenty-five. And you adjusted the salary by twenty-three thirty-three. Almost twenty-six thousand dollars. Based on an experience score. Or we just hired the person? And we cut the Director of Advocacy by twenty-something thousand? Who's been here since December? And busted her a colleague through the entire lead session? You gotta justify that, bro. Like, silence is not an option here.
Uh, I'm, I was just waiting for you to finish.
How do we justify based on experience score when I'm assuming? We didn't experience score in May. This August.
That's correct. And and part of, part of the. Challenge was, right, we were working with two different. Uh, compensation. Bands, so to speak, right? We had the new one effective July first, and we had the old or the existing one that was prior to, and we also had, uh.
July first is the new band. There is no previous band. July first is what the board said and adopted.
No, I I understand that, Chair, but this individual was going through that recruitment process earlier, and at that time that he was hired. Based on what our bands were and our prosa- uh, procedures were at that time. That was what the salary amount was determined to be. And that's why he was offered that. At that time.
I mean, again. One thirty-nine six fifty-six is. Twelve thousand more than the Director of is, Director of Advocacy is at one twenty-nine sixty. Almost eleven thousand dollars less. Kapuana had her hand raised. I wanna recognize her if she still wants to speak.
Mahalo. I think it's important, um, to just, for context, this whole budget process is new. And I don't think that there's gonna be anybody in this room that, um, had. Total clarity from beginning to end of this process, including, um, this salary schedule that we're talking about. So I, I just wanna address what, what you're saying, Chair, that this, what was in the budget is, that's. What it is, and we're not, and then Vice Chair saying that we're not referring to the ad hoc anymore. Correct. I'm, I'm, I'm reiterating what you just said. And so. All of these expectations or whatever, none of this has been communicated to us. So although we may not want to talk about what past practice is, until further notice that we are moving differently. Then we're gonna be utilizing our structures that are in place. That's not to say that we ignored what was in the budget. But when it came over to the administration and we are reviewing, um, for, again, pay parity, for fairness, for consistency. Yes, we did, Chair and, and Board, looked at it from. A perspective of ensuring that there is equity across. And if we were to ever be challenged by any other employee for why was, to your point, you know, whatever paperwork, how did we get to a certain dollar amount? We needed to be able to have some kind of convention that we could. Point to. And we do have past practice, and that past practice has not been found to be faulty or an issue in terms of pay parity. Now, that's not to say we shouldn't have given our staff raises years prior. That was a board decision not to do that. So mahalo for in twenty twenty five, in this twenty six budget, actually addressing that, that's great. But administratively, we are still responsible in that implementation to ensure that there is fairness parity. And if there's a disagreement. And what I'm hearing from Chair right now is that needs to come back to the Board. Fair enough. Now we know. That's what you, if that's the process that we want to follow now, because that has not been the process, Chair. And all fairness to administration, that has not been the process. This, this budget process was not our budget process either.
Whether it's the process or not. I think it's like pretty smart. To inform twenty three members of our staff. Before you lower their pay rate off of what the board adopted. Before you pay them and send them the memo. Like, I just think that's good standard practice if you're gonna do that. And if you had brought it back in front of the Board, then we could have had the discussion. We could have agreed to disagree, or maybe not, or adopted. But we, we'd made those changes, and I, I didn't know, at least from two weeks ago, when we had this conversation, that you were going to do that. We discussed really the two positions, um, the Budget Chief and the Research Systems Manager. That you're gonna bring back to the Board with the revised org chart. At this meeting. But I didn't know you're adjusting forty eight salaries. And pressing enter on that and implementing it into the payroll system. And I think this, I, I would hope that this Board would want to know that ahead of time. And I would more importantly think twenty three or forty eight of our Ohana staff would wanna have known that ahead of time. Uh, I mean, in reference to the TA piece, I, I mentioned that before, I think that needs to come back before the Board. There are, and I, Kapuana agrees, right? I think there's, there could potentially be positions that we are underpaying to do this interim role. Or overpaying if we're using the standard of, that D-Herd uses, where if it's directed to direct, you're just expected to. To fill that role. And then if it's a one step up. Maybe it's eight percent, or ten percent, or twelve percent, but we should adopt a policy included in our handbooks. Because when I came here back in November, December, and to no one's fault, there are a lot of interim positions. We got one right there, who's now our General Counsel, that was interim for like three years. Imagine the amount of money, I don't know, were we paying him interim? Were we paying him TA? He was getting a TA adjustment for three years? Great. What was that number based off of? Ten percent? Could have been fifteen percent. I just think we have to set that policy before it's implemented. And the Board, we, we, we can help you with that direction, but I think that. It, I'm just one, one opinion, but I would really like to see. Our org chart. Titles for certain positions, their salary rates implemented. If you want to make changes to that, and you have solid justifiable reasons. Bring it back to the Board, and we can change it. Our Operations Manager reduced his salary by seven thousand dollars. He handles the entire, everything. Our travel, our fleet. Every Neighbor Island office, this facility, working together with Leanne. They were planning on that. Don't think we should have reduced it. Vice Chair, you have a motion?
Um, Mr. Chair, based on this conversation today, I move pursuant to Hawaii Revised Statutes ten six B. That the Office of Hawaiian Affairs OHA Administration shall. Number one, immediately implement the Board of Trustees approved salary rates as adopted in action item BF twenty five dash fifty one. Number two, immediately implement the BOT approved position title changes as adopted in action item BF twenty five fifty one. Number three, immediately implement and reissue the BOT approved organizational chart as adopted in action item BF twenty five dash fifty one. By close of business day, today. Number four, reissue updated salary memos to the forty eight affected OHA employees. Reflecting their BOT approved salary rates as adopted in action item BF twenty five dash fifty one. Number five, adjust salaries for the affected forty eight OHA employees by the September fifth pay period. Including retroactive compensation to July first, twenty twenty five, by either issuing additional compensation or recovering overpayments as applicable. And number six, clarify that there is no latitude discretion or deviation permitted in the execution of this BOT directive. It must be unequivocally and fully implemented as stated.
Trustees, we have a motion on the table. We can. We can go to discussion. The text is on the screen. It is, we can print it for you if you'd like. It's on your, it's on your computer right in front of you. Legal?
It, it is, it's, it's regarding an agenda item. It's a motion regarding an agenda item.
It is a motion regarding an agenda item, and it is fully, um, allowable. Under our Roberts rules and state sunshine law. I mean, to be frankly honest, we already adopted this. The only thing that is the adjustment is the, um. The clarifying and, and the TA. Yeah, this, this is the budget. It's, it's, it's reiterating the directive that we adopted.
Mr. Chair, for me clarified, this is action item BF twenty five fifty one that we took action on, this board approved already, so we all have multiple copies of this.
Trustees, we have a motion on the table for discussion.
Um, Mr. Chair?
Chair Emerda.
Those forty eight employees. It's gonna be positive one side and not positive on the other. So. I'm concerned. All forty eight know, knew. About this, either going down in salary or going up in salary. There's not gonna be any repercussions if they're going up. But the ones that are going down, that's the ones I'm concerned about. So. If we're gonna move everything up, can we move them up as they were? Noted in their, um, memos?
It's, Chair, it's frustrating to me that we have to take this action. We didn't do this. We are having to clean up. But in my opinion, something that didn't have to occur. All I'm saying is, let's reset back to what we passed. If we wanna make those adjustments on the increase side, that that needs to come back before the Board. And it was only one pay period. So by immediately making the change for the next pay period, there can be those adjustments.
Okay.
Also, some of the positions are vacant, like the CFO position.
Well, I don't care about the vacant positions. I care about the people that also saw their numbers, like the people that saw their numbers go down. You know what I mean? So, um, I feel for them as well. But I'm okay with, um, having it come back in the next meeting. To be considered.
I, I don't think we can wait till the next meeting. I think that they have asked for clear direction.
No, no, that, the ones that are.
Yeah, 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 sure, sure. I mean, I, I, I actually think that, um. Uh, and it can be included in this motion, or the Vice Chair can amend his motion, that. Any TA increases should be removed, and there is only four of them. And bring it back in front of the Board, Budget and Finance Committee. And then the Board, and we can adopt it quickly. We can even do it Wednesday, Thursday. But we need that policy for TA. Cause right now, our CFO. Interim is getting a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar salary. And we, I'm, trustee, we didn't do that, right? Our administration did that.
Yeah.
So I think, I think that should be included. Just go back to what we said. Let's get a TA policy in place through the BNF Committee. We can implement that immediately, based on the appropriate level, right? You know, right now.
Appropriate level and appropriate size of our, um, portfolio.
And then here's another thought, right? And, and when you're looking at temporary assignments, maybe there's some type of cutoff, right? Like, you don't get a temporary assignment. If you're making two hundred fifty thousand dollars or above. I don't know. You know, like, there, there's gotta be some cutoff, right?
Yeah.
For the high, for the highest. Earnings. So, but that would be part of the policy. That you would bring an action item back before the Board. So I think that's something that should be included as well. And we can move quickly. I mean, we can, we can, it's six days. We can agendize something in six days if you wanna bring it back to fix the problem.
We should do that.
And we can, we can do that as a second motion after this, specifically the TA, because in re, in reality, with the motion you see in front of you, trustee Akina. We already adopted. Supermajority adopted that. This is a reaffirmation of that, so that our administrative team has clear direction in how to execute the Board's directive.
I would agree with you, Mr. Chair, that in general, we, we adopted the budgeting. And the tenor of the statements that are, are before us. But there are some specifics that changed the tone quite a bit. And I'll appreciate being able to address that.
Sure. So this is what the motion that the Vice Chair has put forward in front of you. It's basically what we've already adopted, but I think it gives clear direction. It messages to our staff. That, uh, and we're all in this together, so if there was an error that made, was made on the Admin's part, whether it was a failure communicator or not, fine. Let's fix it now. Let's come back with something that's meaningful, makes sense, and then implement it. And that's, that's what I, what I think we should do, and I appreciate the motion, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll address the, uh, or did I cut you off? Okay. I'm addressing item number six. Clarify. That there is no latitude. Discretion. Or deviation. Permitted in the execution of this BOT directive. It must be unequivocally and fully implemented as stated. The problem with this. Statement. Is that not only does it fail to reflect the collaborative tenor of our culture here at OHA. In the work that takes place between the Board and the Administration. It also overrides the fiduciary duty of the Administration. We as trustees have enumerated fiduciary duties in HRS, as does the CEO and Administration. One of the functions of Administration is to protect the organization, and included in that is to protect the Board. From decisions that may not be fully vetted. Today, you have heard, and I think. Praise is due. To, you have heard from our Director of HR, Corey. The multiple times. He fulfilled his fiduciary duty. By referring to HR statute, existing agreements with employees that may not have been known to others. To best practice standards that are used in HR, in conventional, everyday. Interpretation of. Salary ranges. And so forth. He demonstrated. His capacity. To lead. A professional HR operation. And in, in so doing. He. Advised the Board. And protected us. I, I don't think that we should abandon that. Administration must have latitude discretion. And so forth, to protect us, to vet our decisions. I, I don't think that the Administration is going to run away from us and hold the organization hostage to something that the Board does not want. We know these people. They are committed to the Lahui. They are committed to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, and they are committed to us as trustees. And so both the tone and substance of item six are actually hurtful to us. In, in the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Now, I, I'm very sorry for individuals who have. Set their hopes of a salary. Based on. An action item passed at the Board. To them, I, I say, sorry, we're sorry for. Wrong expectations. If, if it didn't turn out for them. But I think we have to educate. Our organization and our Lahui, that when we operate as a Board and pass. A motion here related to employment salaries. That we are setting budget ranges. And that we are addressing positions and not individuals. The Board may from time to time. Address a particular individual's salary. If that is the CEO. Or someone the Board chooses to hire and exercise salary determination over. But in general. It is the CEO's responsibility to hire the staffing for the organization. And the Board does not. Identify individuals, nor should the Board compare. Individuals by name, one to another, as to their worthiness for salary increases or not. Something which did take place today, and in practice, I hope we will not continue. And so forth. And what you did observe was our Administration boldly. Standing up to Mr. Chair, and I say this with the deepest respect. An inquisition. And trying his very best to answer. And at times even being insulted when he was silent and being told. There is no place for. That silence is not an option, when culturally we must know that our HR Director was attempting to show respect. We, we, we have to stop these practices. We have to come together. Our culture, our Aloha, our Ohana. Must be here first before we make strategic decisions. It's for this reason. It's for this reason that I I cannot accept today's motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, trustee Akina. Trustee Akina, here's the bottom line. The administration unilaterally ignored a board governance directive and our authority when we were here on June thirtieth and we adopted a budget. That's.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on. You you said the, we were advised of these changes. We were not advised of these changes, as well as forty eight other people were not advised of these changes until they got a memo in an email. This is the first opportunity we've had to discuss this. We were not advised. To me, it's offensive to suggest that this board needs any type of protection. Once we make a decision, we accept that risk. It's not the administration's role to protect us. We are not a secondary ceremonial role. We are not a lame duck board. We don't lack expertise, integrity, or vision. And we can either sit idle and allow that to occur without consequence, so we can affirmably fulfill our duties entrusted to us by those who elected us to do that. And ten six gives the board the power to effect to the full and effective performance and discharge of the duties entrusted in the entire chapter ten of the Hawaii Right Statutes. We've already adopted this. And and if you, trustee Akina, if if you have um an issue with item number six, maybe the vice chair would be willing to remove that. If we can have commitment on the record from the administration that we're going to implement one through five, would that be amenable?
In keeping with your statement that we have already adopted this, I would not see the necessity of voting for this statement today. And I'm cautious because I would really like to look at each term as carefully as I can, but would not be able to do so immediately. For example, in one of these statements, number three, a demand that we implement and reissue BOT-approved organizational chart by end of business today. I don't know the reality realisticness of that in terms of doing a good job. So I'll accept that, as you say, we've already adopted. But I will not add another action.
The reason for the sense of urgency with our organizational chart and these salaries is we need to unequivocally send a message to our ohana, our staff, of who is their direct lines of authority, who are they reporting to, what are their titles, and what are their salaries that they can depend on. This org chart can be adopted and modified in a few hours and can be issued by close of business today. So we are all on the same page. I think that's really important. And again, we already adopted this, trustee Akina.
Yes. I will agree with you that we should send us a clear message as to whom each employee in the organization is accountable. And I believe that that begins with our assertion, which is based on law and true, that the board is responsible for the organization. The authority for all matters is vested in the board. But it is also the case, according to HRS ten five, that the board may elect to delegate those powers to the administrator. And we have done so. And so I think the role of the administrator needs to be emphasized in helping our organization's employees understand to whom they are accountable. They are accountable to the CEO. They are accountable for their positions, their salaries, their work structure to the CEO. And I, with all my heart, I believe we can balance these two accountabilities. The total authority of the board, with which I am in complete agreement with you, and the functional authority of the CEO when it comes to leadership of her team. And I hope we can work together toward that end.
I hope so too. And and I would have much rather have spent the last hour talking about something else, to be frank. But we're addressing this because of what happened over the last week. We didn't know about it. Our staff didn't know about it, and it was unilaterally done without our approval. So we're we're playing cleanup here, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, um I just want to say, uh I I would be hesitant to remove that part of the motion that I had made. But I'm willing to do it. But I do want to say this. And without this action item or this discussion spinning over to any other action item or any other issue that's going on here at OHA, I asked questions today that I felt was very valid. And there was an opportunity for administration to answer those questions, to be able to justify. Because at the end of the day, Corey, you're not on the front page, bro. I don't want to be on the front page, but it's going to be one of us. It's going to be this board. And at the end of the day, we take full responsibility. And so when we ask these questions, it's not to say you didn't do your job, you suck at it. That's not what it is. Unfortunately, you're in that seat, you assumed the role, and you you're doing your best, right? Short-staffed as well, right? But I've asked questions that I couldn't get the answer to, like the flex flex hiring sheet and everything. I mean, we got to cover our O'Kole over here as the board. And like to trustee Akina's point, if administration is looking out for us, that was the opportunity today. Where's the policy? Where's the law? Right? Stuff to change our minds or convince us otherwise. But you know, Mr. Chair, I want to, I'm in my motion to exclude number six. And number six reads, clarify that there is no latitude discretion or deviation permitted in the execution of this BOT directive. It must be unequivocally and fully implemented as stated. We can remove that whole excerpt, Mr. Chair.
So, yes, will administration have the opportunity, as you mentioned earlier, to bring back items back to the board for discussion or approval?
Sure, to your committee.
Yeah, okay.
It's up to you.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Just wanted to ensure that.
That is your kuliana. Absolutely. And it's your kuliana to agendaize an action item and and bring it in front of the board for adoption. For sure. That's all. That's that's all my point was, is just implement the directive. We need to make adjustments. We can course correct, but we do it in a transparent way. We do it with this board's approval. We communicate that to our staff, so we're not surprising anybody. I think that's fair. Trustee Akaka.
For action item five in this, what is the method in which one will recover overpayments?
That's for, that's for Corey. And we were in this situation now where we have had people, correct me if I'm wrong, that got these forty eight got either less than what they were expecting or more than what they're expecting. And I mean, I've in my different jobs before, especially at Hawaiian, I've gotten paid more sometimes. And when my paycheck comes the next time, that is garnished, taken back, to level the playing field. So can you explain that process? And and I guess also, um to follow up on trustee Akaka, is implementing this within a month by September fifth possible?
That that would be challenging because it took us a while just to submit all the, get to get all the paperwork together, submitted offer approvals, and then input all the adjustments. In addition to that, we would need to do adjustment salary salary collections for overpayments, which in and of itself is a tedious process.
So when would you be able to implement it by? I was, it's not everybody, right? It's forty eight people.
Right. If we could have at least until the end of September.
So what which pay period?
To be for it to be effectuated, the October twentieth, by October twentieth, that would be helpful.
October twentieth? What about the, you can't do it in the first weekend of October? The October third payday?
We can try, but we're going to have to do a lot of the calculations and.
You don't have to do the calculations. It's, we got the number. Just put the number in.
Well, no, I understand it, but it's it's as far as to to go through all of the approval process, create all the paperwork, then there's the things that we need to do on the payroll side of things. It does take us time.
Okay. October when?
By the October twentieth payroll. Again, we will try to get it done before that, but if we could just get.
Can you amend the motion for number five to adjust it to October twentieth?
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend my motion for number five. Adjust salaries for the affected forty eight OHA employees by October twentieth pay period, including retroactive compensation to July first, two thousand twenty five, by either issuing additional compensation or recovering overpayments as applicable.
Also was made aware, right, we have ceded a hundred forty thousand in HR, right, to be used for potential recruitment. If you need to, if you need additional staff to accelerate that process, you can use that. At least I I think you can use that. That's what this is for. But not what it was meant for, but it is a resource to get this done as quick as possible so we can give certainty to our employees. Yeah. Okay, so you change the date to October twentieth?
Yep, October twentieth.
And and I know we took number six out, but are we clear? Yes, yes. Okay, trustee Akaka.
So is it where, and I I'm trying to get clarity on this. Is it where the recovering of overpayments is going to be reflected in the up- the upcoming paycheck that will follow? Or is it expected that the employee will provide that difference? An overpayment in between that time?
And I think the way to clean this up is like Corey's going to have to go back and do some calculations. I think you need to reissue memos, especially to the forty eight individuals, to clearly show that you are paid this in 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 the overage and that there will be a collection of that in these paychecks. It's going to take a little bit of time to do that.
Yes.
No, because we don't know what the outcome is going to be in the BNF Committee, so.
Well, yeah, but we don't know. We, the easiest way to clean it up is to is to just clean it up one time. And then if anything comes back before the BNF Committee, then we can adjust it there. And at least like there's certainty for those employees that can plan um in the event that there will be a collection in their paycheck because of an overpayment. Yeah, I'm sorry, Corey, go ahead.
Uh so for for overpayments, there is a um process that we need to follow. And that process does um give or afford the overpayee um some options on on how they choose to um address that overpayment, whether it's providing a a personal check, whether it's through payroll deductions. And then depending on the amount of the overpayment, the payback period is also specified in that process or procedure. So I I did want to clarify that, that we may not be able to get all of the payments back by that even that October date. You know, the higher the amount, the longer of a period of time they would have. They also would have the option to you know, try try to argue the the need for repaying that money's back as well. So if if, you know, we can also address that in this.
Yeah. Yeah.
Justie Ahuna?
Yes.
Justie Akaka?
Aye.
Justie Akina?
A'ole.
Justie Alapa? Justie Lindsay? Justie Galuteria? Justie Suzza? Justie Wahehe?
Yes.
Chair Kohale?
Aye.
You have eight yes, one a'ole.
Okay. Yeah. Trustee Suzie, you have another motion?
Yeah. Um, Mr. Chair, um I moved that the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Administration, so immediately discontinue all temporary assignment pay currently. Discontinue all temporary assignment pay currently in effect. And number two, direct the Human Resources Department to present an action item, AI, to the Budget and Finance Committee at its August twentieth, two thousand twenty five meeting, proposing a TA pay differential schedule for board consideration. Um if adopted, the schedule shall be incorporated into the OHA employee handbook under the compensation section.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, similar. This is to address what I think we all agree is the temporary assignment pay. There's what I can see, six individuals that are getting temporary assignment pay um that may be getting less or more than they should be, or maybe should not be getting at all. And I think that um is wise to bring that in front of the board and to bring it back in front of the Budget and Finance Committee. And so the um motion is to um discontinue all TA pay currently in effect. And to basically bring back an action item back to Chair Alapa's committee that will look at um TA practice. And the heard, you know, definitely is a benchmark that we can use for that. And establish a TA policy that this board adopts, recommended by the administration, and that we can include in our employee handbook so that it's unequivocal that if you are um required to fill a TA interim position because of vacancy, depending on the step that you're required or you're being asked to fill, that you will get, you know, effective as soon as I guess HR can implement it. The um the the TA increase. And and then. And that that, yeah, that TA stoppage includes all TA positions that we are currently including the CFOs, the interim CFO. So that's the motion on table, trustee Akina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask the administration to brief us on what the impact of passing the first part of this motion would be today, completely ending TA pay. What is your assessment of that, pro and con? Given the timing?
Mahalo, trustee, for the question. Um I make up um that a conversation would have to be had with all of those that are in the that are doing the extra work on whether or not they would. that are doing the extra work on whether or not they would want to continue. I make up that they would probably, because they are mission-driven, will stay, but I can't say that for sure. So I would, I would need to, I would need to ask each of them if they would continue in that role without the TA funding.
If I can add, trustee Akina, just to be clear, we're bringing this immediately back to our chair's committee, and we can agendize it the next day. If we're, you know, I know we have to have this practice of waiting two weeks so we can all like absorb what the action item was, but we can bring it right back and have this done in two weeks. And, and be, because what I am worried is that I think there's at least one position where we might be underpaying that individual for that TA assignment position. And there may also be one individual that shouldn't be getting a TA if we use the state civil service benchmark as our guide. And there's a whole section dedicated on the D-Herd website to temporary assignments. Sorry, Kapona?
Mahalo, Chair. I, I am in absolute agreement of having a policy. Clarity is good on this, and again, this is not going to be a one-time occurrence. We will potentially have other TA assignments and to have very specific a policy guiding that would be appreciated. Mahalo.
Yeah, and, and like I said, in the document that was provided to us, there are, there are four people that are currently receiving TA. You know, one of them is a significant amount. We've already addressed that one. The other, the other one is at a director-director level that if we use that benchmark, would not be receiving it. And so there's really only two other people. And so it's not, doesn't affect a lot of people, and I think we can fix it pretty quick. Between five to twenty percent, according to the D-Herd director. That is also, you know, they set that range, but they have to collectively bargain it as well. So that, that is an agreement between the union and between, you know, state. But incorporate a policy, I think is good. Put it in our handbook is great. And I think what your challenge is, is to figure out like the step, the level of increase. Okay? Well, Kavu?
Justi Ahuna?
Yes.
Justi Akaka?
Aye.
Justi Akina?
Aye.
Justi Alapa? Justi Lindsay? Justi Galuteria?
Aye.
Justi Sousa? Justi Wahehe?
Yes.
And Chirka Hale?
Aye.
You have nine yes votes.
Okay, thank you so much, trustees for that work. And, you know, just to address what trustee Akina said, you know, I'm sorry, Corey, if, if I interpreted your silence as not having an appropriate answer. And so if I, you know, I apologize for that. And I, and I thank you, trustee Akina, for calling me out. Because if, you know, I do something, I take accountability for it and responsibility. So we know you're doing a good job and a, and a tough job, Corey. And we want to give you the guidelines to be able to do what the board directs you to do. We also value your advice and suggestions and the general practices. But let's collaborate more on that together, and we can do that through action items and through board policy. So thank you, trustee Akina. Hey, I think we need lunch. So let's take a recess. We'll come back. We're going into executive session. Half an hour, okay? Okay, 1:30, we'll reconvene.